Grand Chaffers County Board of Commissioner Meetings for Wednesday, May 15th, 2019. Let's start with our invocation, Commissioner LaPointe.
Good morning. Lord, we gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight, guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Rule call, please.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
LaPointe?
Present.
Jewitt?
Here.
Hunley?
Here.
Kofia?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
Henschel?
Here.
Okay. Everyone is here, and we have approval of the minutes, the minutes of May 1st, 2019, regular meeting. Page three in your packet. Does anyone have any corrections or motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Moved by Klaus, supported by Jewitt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. We're on first public comment. This will be the only public comment until the end of the meeting. There's only a couple items on the agenda, so please step up, give us your name. Oh, you read the rules, please. Just give me that look.
(Inaudible). Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the board. Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized, and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Okay. You'd like to speak, step right up. Give your name, where you're from.
Good morning. I'm Sylvia McCullough. I'm at 20359 Douglas Road, Interlocken, Michigan. Considering that the, today, the Board of Commissioners will be addressing goal-setting, there are five goals that I hope that you will consider when forming your forward-looking vision for the future of Grand Travers County and the surrounding region. We desperately need young, career-oriented families to stay in and move into our region. In order for that to happen, we will need the BOC to be committed to the following: To work to ensure the building of a high-speed regional business internet. Work to encourage the creation of businesses by entrepreneurs that provide high-paying jobs. Work to ensure that young families have access to affordable, high-quality childcare. That's a real problem. Work to ensure that young families have access to quality, affordable housing. Finally, but not least, work to ensure that their children be able to attend well-funded public schools. As I move about the various organizations in our area, such as the Women-to-Women Power Luncheon that I will be attending today after this meeting, I want to be able to report that we can all rest assured that the members of the GT Board of Commissioners are committed to forward-thinking agenda, that you will work toward Grand Travers County becoming a place that draws the best and the brightest to our little corner of northwest Michigan. Let us all join together to ensure that this happens. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Just jump right up there. First come, first served.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Carol Shakra. I'm at 1863 Caspian, and my topic is the clear-cutting of the trees at the airport, which has been discussed over and over. And I'm going to restate the obvious and then offer two suggestions for your consideration. When the clear-cutting first took place, I called the airport and a very nice woman said, I asked why, and the very nice woman said it was for an FAA mandate. But in the weeks that followed, there was no FAA mandate. The reason was then switched to the need to be proactive, referencing a nature assessment study. But upon reviewing the nature assessment study, it seems apparent that the risk was low and the tree thinning could have been an option. The third reason, and probably the most likely reason, for the tree cutting seemingly is to develop an industrial park. Well, we should say it like it is, and whatever the reason, the public was taken by surprise, and too many people are now distrustful. Honesty, transparency, and full disclosure are the way to deal with all difficult decisions impacting our public. In an effort to keep citizens better informed, here's an idea for you to consider. You, the Grand Travers Board of Commissioners, might consider appointing whichever board member at that time represents the neighbors around the airport, appointing that commissioner to the Airport Commission. Something to think about. It certainly would be a good way to disseminate information, get it out. I know there was a struggle to get Record Eagle to print. Having a commissioner on the Airport Board could be a tremendous help in that direction, getting information out. And here's another idea for the greater good. Please consider using part of the denuded area as a location for solar panels to provide the airport with its own electricity. That seems like a twofer. The airport would be being proactive while at the same time providing its own electricity. The airport's electrical bill would be slashed. But best of all, it would be better for the climate, for cleaner air, and for all citizens. And I thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning.
Commissioners?
Dave Petrov, Interlocken. Anyway, this is public input about public input, so. Democracy happens when we, the people, have a voice in making decisions about all matters that determine the relations between we, the people. Good democracy can only happen when the voices of we, the people, are heard by those individuals who were elected by we, the people, to be representatives of we, the people. And entrusted with some power, we allow them to rule over us. Government by the people is thus the basis of democracy. We, the people, have long-established rules that require our elected representatives to conduct decision-making in full view of we, the people, which means we demand the opportunity to witness our government in action, and we expect our elected representatives to listen to us when we speak to them. We, the people, are the public referred to in public input, where we, the people, have a limited opportunity to express viewpoints and ask questions on various matters. You, the representatives, are expected to listen, and you are expected to take public input into consideration when making your decisions. We, the people, may never have unanimous agreement about your decisions, but your decisions will be judged according to how open you have been with the public. Until a few weeks ago, Grand Travers County used to acknowledge statements made during public input by stating in the meeting minutes the subject matter of each comment made, and sometimes if the presenter was for or against some proposed action. Now, the minutes only report a list of names under public comment. The gist of this seems to be we, the people, have not been heard, or you, the commission, are afraid to acknowledge there is public sentiment and public knowledge that contradicts what you know to be true. Good government depends on well-informed people using valid information to justify any decision they make. We, the people, do not like expanding secrecy and deception. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Good morning.
Good morning. Linda Pepper, and I live at 4306 Central Park Drive in Gronn. And I have three things to talk about on your goal-setting that I'm hoping you'll do today, and the first is the senior center. I know it's going to be built on Traverse City grounds, but there's a lot of seniors who pay a lot of taxes to this county, and we are a large voting bloc, and we vote, and we listen, and we know what's going on. So please consider that and help in any way that you possibly can to make that senior center a reality. The second thing is climate change, which I probably should have put first because it's the most important thing going on in our world today. Everything that you can physically do, F-I-S-C-A-L-L-Y, that you can do to go ahead and retrofit or improve the energy efficiency of our transportation and of our buildings is going to make a difference on that. I'm doing everything I can at home. I expect you to do everything you can as a county. And the third thing is the jail. I've toured the jail when I was a candidate for county commission, and I know how inhumane the conditions there are for both the staff and for the incarcerated people. And you may want to build a new one, and that may be a good decision. But please, when you consider that, realize that there may be changes coming in our criminal legal system, and we may wind up with less people in jail. So please, think about that when you're considering capacities. I'm hopeful that that could happen because that would cost everybody a whole lot less and be less disruptive to people's lives. So please consider those things. Thank you very much, and I appreciate that you're doing goal-setting. That's so important. If you don't have goals, you're never going to get there. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Good morning. Matthew Scheck, 9th Street, Grand Travers County, taxpayer. First, I want to make a comment, well, I was going to make a comment about our, this is Police Week, but also I wanted to make a short, brief statement on the appointment process that we do here for the county. You have new appointees that will be coming in. I just want to say congratulations to those that'll be coming in. Hope you do your job as well or better than the people that you're replacing. And for those that are going, thank you for your service. It's never, you know, a light thing when people give up their time and, in a lot of cases, money to come in and serve voluntarily. But back to Police Week. Several years back, my wife and I attended something that was put on by Ellie Cosgrove, who was the wife of the State Police Post Commander here in Traverse City. And it was a prayer. My wife and I have this hanging at our house that we picked up at that meeting that Ellie Cosgrove put on. And I'll read it. It kind of cuts to the heart of really what policemen, our law enforcement community faces today. And this goes: "Lord, I ask for courage, courage to face and conquer my fears, courage to take me where others will not go. I ask for strength, strength of body to protect others, strength of spirit to lead others. I ask dedication, dedication to my job to do it well, dedication to my community to keep it safe. Give me, Lord, concern for all those who trust me and compassion for those who need me, and please, Lord, through it all, be at my side." I always thought that was very telling of the deep concern that police, our law enforcement people, especially our police officers, face today. There are many, many trials, and I thought it would be important, keeping in honoring the fire police officer community. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Good morning.
Good morning. Ann Rogers, 1236 Peninsula Drive, and taxpayer of city and county, and I'm asking that these be included in the record, and I will pass it on to the clerk. There is so much hate, misogyny, and other forms of vile feelings in our country today. It worries me terribly. It's happened in our own community. And when I think about building trust, it's got to start with us. It's got to start with you. And so I have compiled a list of things that I feel have, you have either betrayed our trust or you have turned your back on the feelings of the people of this community. Most of these were by the chair alone unless noted. On day one, the meeting time was changed to 8:00 AM, and invocation or prayer was added to begin the meeting, so that was a four-to-three vote. A committee of one made appointments to committees after everyone was asked for their preferences and were ignored. The chair reserved the right to set the agendas. Public comment was restricted and refused on whatever items he wishes. Public federal money for the needle exchange in addition treatment was denied by a four-to-three vote. The chair lied about the tree-cutting at the airport and finally admitted it at the 5-1 meeting. The chair tried to up the amount that could be spent without board approval, and that was tabled, and I'm wondering why? Why was that amount upped? Now the questions are, what else is this group trying to hide? What else is on your agenda that we don't know about that's going to be sprung on us? My other concern is regarding the minutes. The clerk previously did them, and then they were changed, and they were so sketchy that they said virtually nothing about what was said or acted on. I'm just wondering if someone asked them to be changed. Please, work to bring trust back to this community. I see Mr. Lemkool here, and when he was on the city commission way, way back, there was a different feel. Bring back that feeling of trust, please.
Thank you, Ann. I'll be glad to meet with you anytime you want to talk about issues.
Good morning.
Morning. My name is Alan McCullough. My address is 20359 Douglas Road, and that's Interlocken, Michigan. Several weeks ago, the commission voted down free funding of $40,000 for the Grand Travers Health Department to apply as assistance to what's called the Michigan Harm Reduction Program. Two commissioners, Gordy LaPointe and Betsy Kofia, voted in favor of the money, and I want to thank them. Bryce Hunley recused himself for conflict of interest reasons, and Sunny Willock wasn't here. In the Record Eagle of May 1st, there was a very clear explanation of the importance of the Harm Reduction Program by a Kelly McIntosh, a nurse at the Munson Medical Center. The crucial point I got from her writing was that the program was an effective means of reducing the spread of hepatitis C, known widely for its easy transmission and infectiousness. I understood this point previously, but McIntosh really drove home it. There were three commissioners who voted against the free funding: Rob Henschel, Ron Klaus, and Brad Jewitt. I recommend that they explore the issue further and suggest they read the forum piece in the Record Eagle by Kelly McIntosh. Hopefully, they'll change their minds and hearts the next time, if there is one, and vote for this very common sense measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this morning? Good morning, Mary.
Good morning. No one seemed nervous. I'm nervous.
Okay. Start with your name and where you're from.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Mary Marroy. I live at 2975 Wild Juniper Trail in Traverse City in Acme Township. I'm here today to address the commission regarding Resolution 20-2019, Appointment to Commission on Aging and Community Mental Health Boards. I am asking the commission to not accept the resolution as presented by the ad hoc committee. For the past six years, I have faithfully served the residents of Grand Travers County as a member of the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Board. I came to the board with an interest in giving back to my community. After 39 years working in state government, I believed that I continued to have much to offer, and that was, and that I was uniquely qualified, particularly in the area of child welfare. In addition, I want you to know that in addition to the 3,500 adults in our region with serious mental illness that are served by Northern Lakes, there are over 1,000 children with serious emotional disturbances who are also served. In addition to those numbers are children who are on the autism spectrum or children with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Few members of the current board have had experience working with these precious children. I see my role to be one that ensures the highest quality of service is provided to these children and their families, in addition to the adults that we serve. My passion for the past 50 years has been working to make the community better for children and families. Two examples of the work that I have influenced since I have served in this past term on the board was the development of an infant mental health prevention program and the Family Assessment and Safety Team, or FAST, that provides emergency services to children in our six-county area. My connection in the community helped staff bring the right people to the table to make these programs happen. I'm not going to repeat my resume. I believe that that has been shared with you along with my application. I am proud of the work that I have done representing this community on the Northern Lakes Board, and I would very much like to continue in that role. I am asking the board to defeat or to amend the resolution to allow me to be appointed to a third term representing the general public. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for your service. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Marilyn Fitzgerald. I live at 9965 Center Road in Traverse City. I'm a PhD psychologist in this community and have practiced psychology for over 40 years here. I began my beginnings was at the State Hospital on the male-admission unit, so I'm happy to be here now. I'm here as a citizen and a professional member of the community to support the application of Mary Marroy for the Community Mental Health Board. It's my understanding that Mary Marroy has submitted her application for renewal of her seat on the Community Mental Health Board, a place where she has already served and contributed for six years. I have always been impressed with Mary's dedication to the well-being and mental health of this community. For 39 years, she worked countless hours with the state of Michigan in human services and dedicated that same kind of time and effort to the Community Mental Health Board. She has developed expert skills in community collaboration and received national recognition for this, and they don't hand that out to just anybody. The woman can collaborate and lead. Mary has written and reviewed and implemented various grants through the Department of Human Services and the Children's Advocacy Center. This has been really important to our community, and she has served in a leadership role there. I cannot imagine a professional more qualified in this community to serve on the Board of Community Mental Health. Mary has the leadership skills and needed at this particular time in our community. We face turbulent times in the field of mental health in this county and in this country: increased suicide, bullying in our schools, depression, and violence in random places. This places the burden of this Board of Community Mental Health to determine the best, most effective, and efficient services to provide to our community that requires a deep understanding of the community needs. Mary has the professional skills in leadership and collaboration to help steer our community in a healthy direction. I embrace her dedication and willingness to continue to serve and sincerely hope that she receives the support of this Board to continue her work. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Anybody else? Good morning, Herb.
Good morning. Herb Lemkool, 907 Meadow Drive, Traverse City, Michigan. I'm a past county commissioner for about 16 years, and I have sat in your place many times, trying to figure out who the best person is to appoint to committees. Mary Marroy was appointed to the Community Mental Health. I had the opportunity to work with her at Department of Human Services when I sat as a liaison on that board. We continued to work, not only with Department of Human Services, but also with the pavilions. As the pavilions, we worked on trying to come up with a PACE program for the elderly. Mary was instrumental in making sure that that was going to be taken care of. The mental health, I sat on that board for 12 years. It is a huge responsibility, and we need people with the talent that Mary Marroy has on that board, because one in five of your neighbors has a mental illness. She is passionate. She cares. She knows what's going on. When we started the HelpLink office, which was a connection for people to come in and talk to people and get help, Mary Marroy opened the door for Department of Human Services to receive phone calls directly from those people to find out how they can access the services. 211 came along. We started that, and then it fell down. It has now been reimplemented by United Way. Mary Marroy was instrumental in making sure that that program started in our community. 211 is a direct link for people that need the help of services in our community. I strongly encourage you to reappoint Mary Marroy to the Community Mental Health Board. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Herb. Good to see you. Anybody else today? All right. Going once. All right. We will move on in our agenda then. I thank you all for your comments. Next on the agenda is our approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes or motion to approve? So moved. Sunny?
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second? Motion by Willock, second by Hunley to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have our agenda, Consent Calendar.
The purpose of the Consent Calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the Consent Calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the Consent Calendar, the action noted, received, and filed or approved, is approved by a single commission action adopting the Consent Calendar. A, receive. Number one, First Quarter 2019 Treasurer's Investment Report. Number two, Conservation District, April 2019 Report. Number three, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency Minutes of March 21st. Number four, Department of Health and Human Services Board Pavilions Minutes of March 21st. Number five, Michigan Township Association Minutes of May 2nd. Approvals. Number one, 13th Circuit Court Community Corrections Grant Application and Acceptance. Number two, Commission on Aging Lawn Maintenance Vendor Contracts. Number three, Road Commission Monthly Report. Number four, Resolution Authorizing Road Commission to Purchase Surety and Fidelity Bonds for Board Members. Number five, April 2019 Claims. Number six, Tribal Council Allocation of 2% Fund Grant Applications.
Okay. Anything to remove? Or should we lock?
Two things. Approvals, B, or B1, Sri Shriver is here. I'd like her to speak briefly about what Community Corrections does. I think that would be valid for everyone. And secondly, B6, the tribal allocation of 2% money. I haven't supported it one time in 25 years. I'm probably going to start now.
Okay. Sounds good. Commissioner Hunley?
I'd like to remove A3, the Community Action Agency Minutes, just to highlight a piece of that.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Commissioner Hunley?
I'd like to remove A3, the Community Action Agency Minutes, just to highlight a piece of that.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Commissioner Hunley?
I'd like to remove A3, the Community Action Agency Minutes, just to highlight a piece of that.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. Any? Any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Number six, Tribal Council Allocation of 2% Fund Grant Applications.
Okay. Anything to remove? Or should we lock?
Two things. Approvals B, or B1, Shree Shively is here. I'd like her to speak briefly about what Community Corrections does. I think that would be valid for everyone. And secondly, B6, the tribal allocation of 2% money. I haven't supported it one time in twenty-five years. I'm probably not going to start now.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Hundley?
I'd like to remove A3, the Community Action Agency Minutes, just to highlight a piece of that.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, any members of the public wish anything removed for discussion? Dave?
B4.
B4. Okay. And anyone else? All right.
I just have a question.
Sure.
We generally get the airport commission minutes, but I didn't see them on this one. I know I missed the last meeting because I was sick, but I don't think they were on the last one either. So I'm wondering about the timing. When will we get the airport commission?
When they come in, they go right to the agenda, so maybe...
And I noticed some of these are from back in March. What's the, and then from former, from a meeting that happened earlier this month? So I'm just wondering if there's a standardized system for when we gather minutes? Or do they submit?
I believe once Chris Kramer gets the minutes from the individual boards and committees from outside the county, she puts them in the agenda. I can ask if there's a difference.
And I'm also wondering, just in a sense of timeline, is there possibly what is working into asking of our different boards that are reporting to us to, you know, for within a month after the meetings that we receive those so that we can...
It could be that...
Rather than we have to speak in the time we have?
A lot of these boards meet once a month.
Right.
So they're approving the minutes of the previous month, and then they sign up. So they're going to be two months old by the time we get them.
We got one from May. No, I think this is worth an offline conversation, but I won't do it anymore.
Okay. All right. So we have the removal of items A3, A4, B1, and B6. Did I cover it? We have a motion to approve.
I believe it was B4, not A4. So, Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of items A3, B1, B4, B6.
All right. Moved by Wheelock, supported by Kofia. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Jewett?
Yes.
Hundley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Hentle?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to, we have no special orders of business. We're on to item eight, which is items removed from the consent calendar. We'll take them in order. A3, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency Minutes of 3/21/19, page nineteen in your packet. Commissioner Hundley?
Yeah, I just wanted to call out on page twenty of the packet, page two of the NMCAA Board Meeting Minutes, that they have stated that they have, quote, "effectively ended homelessness among veterans in the counties of Wexford, Mesaki, and Manistee." And A, I think that's terrific, and I wanted to highlight that and call that out because that's a pretty amazing feat, I think. But B, I wanted to just put on the record the question of, you know, are there differences between their communities and our community in those counties versus ours? How do we stand? Are they doing things differently than we are? Any things that we can learn? So I just wanted to highlight that.
Okay. Would you like to move that we receive and file it?
I move that we receive and file the minutes. Thank you.
Support.
Moved by Hundley, supported by Wheelock. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Items received and filed. Run to B1, Thirteenth Circuit Court.
I pulled this. Shree's here this morning. You know, I think it's good occasionally, and when we're receiving money from the government, it's always a good thing. And I think it's important that we recognize what a great job our Community Corrections Board and Department do. So I would ask Shree just to highlight some key things that's going on right now.
Good morning. My name is Shree Shively. I'm the manager of the Thirteenth Circuit Community Corrections Department. We service the Thirteenth Circuit Court as well as the Eighty-S sixth District Court. We are a function underneath the Michigan Department of Corrections. And so the goal of, the overall goal of Community Corrections is to reduce prison commitment rates in this state. And to do that in our local communities, we create programs so that the judges have alternatives to send defendants into rather than hopefully into the prison system. Some of the programs that we have, the old work release facility right here on the campus is called a PRS facility, and that's Probation Residential Services. And that is actually a facility funded by the Department of Corrections. It's not funded by the county or by Community Corrections within our budget. It's a contract that they have with MDOC. It is run by Addiction Treatment Services. And so it is a semi-residential facility in that there is, they are staffed twenty-four hours a day with at least two staff members. The residents they receive are required to receive at least nine hours per week of counseling. And they go off-site for that counseling. They're required to be employed. I apologize. I've really got allergies right now. They're required to be employed. They're required to attend any recovery meetings and things like that. And so that is a very good opportunity that we have here right in our community to send folks so that we don't have to send them throughout the state. We send folks into the local community into recovery homes. And what those are are sober living environments. If somebody wants to get out of jail and they don't have somewhere to go, we can put them in a recovery home. We'll offer them more structure and a stable environment. And we place defendants in lieu of jail, which is house arrest in our programs on a GPS tether. And so what we do is we go into the jail and we assess individuals who have been given at least a thirty-day sentence before, by the District Court and the Circuit Court. And we create an individual plan for each of those people that we work with. And so no one is given the same exact rules or anything because we want to work on why they're in jail, why they maybe keep coming back into the criminal justice system, and to reduce that recidivism and to help them get to the bottom and the root cores of their addictions and their problems. And one of the bonuses of it is it saves jail bed days. There was a study done, when did we have this study? When the NIC came and did the study?
Two years ago.
Mm-hmm. And then they said that without Community Corrections, we would have been, the jail would have been officially overcrowded for over ten years. On any given day, we have at least fifty to sixty people outside of the Grand Traverse County Jail alone. And we service Antrim, Grand Traverse, and Leanneau. So just in the Grand Traverse County Jail, we have at least fifty to sixty people outside of that jail in our supervision. And what that means is while they, while they're on our supervision, they should have been in a jail sentence. And so they serve with us until their jail sentence is up, and then they go back on normal probation and into the community. We also, on Community Corrections, so we work on the pre-end of everything and then a post-end. So the Community Corrections is on the post-end after sentencing. We also do have a pre-trial supervision program for felons. So anytime a new felon is arrested in the Grand Traverse County Jail, I have staff that goes in and they do a risk assessment on those individuals to determine the risk of being, of reoffending, returning to court, and the risk of being released in the community, so safety to the community. And we present, it's a validated risk tool that we use, and it's actually a tool that's used throughout the state. And so we present that to the judges or the magistrates that are going to set their, during their arraignment process. And we recommend their supervision levels and things like that. And when somebody is on that service, we monitor them until they are either, until their case is resolved. And so either their charges are dropped, they're acquitted, or they're sentenced. And so we only provide that for the felons in the community, not the misdemeanors because the Michigan Department of Corrections funds that program, and so it's only for felons. And so there's no funding for misdemeanors, but we need that for misdemeanors anyway as well, but we don't provide that. So it's a little bit short of what we do. And so what I have to do every year is create a grant application to the Michigan Department of Corrections to fund our department. And part of that, we have an advisory board that oversees Community Corrections, and it's made up from representatives from all three of our counties. It has county commissioners, sheriffs, business representatives, community members, probation staff. And so our Community Corrections Advisory Board meets quarterly, so Miss Kofia. If we were, when we submit our reports, they're going to be six months old. Three months old, sorry. So for that kind of thing, you know, just because you were discussing that earlier, that's a reason why some of them might be very old. Because we only meet, actually, we only meet three times per year. So we don't meet often. Anyway, the CCAB is what it's called, Community Corrections Advisory Board. They have to approve my grant application, and they have done that. I then am required to appear before each county board and ask for you to also approve the grant application. And then in it is if they approve my grant application, the state of Michigan, and give us a contract in it as well as asking to receive those funds because you are our fiduciary for our department, and then distribute the funds. So be in a nutshell.
Thank you, Shree. And I realize the agenda item was simply to accept the grant, but I think it's important that we, the Board and the community, understand the value of Community Corrections in our community and what a great job Shree's and her department have done for many, many years. The state of Michigan has recognized our Community Corrections program for as long as I can remember, and I've sat on that Board off and on for twenty years. So it's absolutely a fantastic operation. So with that, I would move to accept the grant application and accept the money if it is in turn given from the state of Michigan.
Support.
Moved by Wheelock, supported by Klaus. Any discussion? All right.
Can I ask just a question? So I'm understanding that it sounds like it has to do with funding, why you're not able to do these same services for, or with folks who are in pre-trial for misdemeanors? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
True. So for just the felons, I have one full-time staff member, myself, and then another staff member that do it part-time. And that's just the felons. There are probably three times more misdemeanors than there are felons. And so the state of Michigan pays our wages for what we do for that population. And so if the county wanted to expand and include misdemeanors, you would have to pay for that yourselves.
Right. And the idea would be maybe diversion so they weren't in jail for pre-trial purposes?
Right. Exactly.
I would note that the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council has that as one of their key items that they're discussing right now.
And also, a side point, the governor has assigned a task force to address pre-trial detention, sentencing, all kinds of stuff. And I just attended a meeting yesterday down in Lansing with the Pew Charitable Trust Foundation that's doing the background work on that. And it was a very, very good program, and that's one of the things that many of us were asking for, was funds. That was a huge part of it, is, you know, everybody wants to do it, but there's not money to do it. We're not alone in that. Most pre-trial agencies are ran by Community Corrections Departments in the state. Most jail service felons, because that's where we have the funding from. And so they also have come here, the Pew Charitable Trust came here on Monday and met with myself and Noel and Tammy Rogers. And they are coming and watching court here tomorrow. So we're involved with that. I was speaking with the gentleman yesterday, and he's going to also come here and meet with me because we have the largest pre-trial program in northern Michigan. And it's running very well. And so he's interested in what we're doing here.
I'm really glad that that, that being looked at, the pre-trial misdemeanor population has a lot of interest in it. So I'll be talking to you.
Okay.
Thank you for your report.
So your services are for pre-trial?
Well, I'm talking misdemeanor. I mean, it sounds like you were worth it for folks past.
We do pre-trial. So pre-trial is before they are sentenced. And then our Community Corrections in lieu of jail program is after they're sentenced to local jail. So we do...
So after they're found guilty, then they go to you?
Right. So we do...
Well, it comes down to, it comes down to a thing about numbers because we have a certain amount of our jail population, our pre-trial defendants who have not yet been adjudicated. But at the same time, they may or may not be able to make bail. You know, so then you get into the whole discussions about what is the appropriate bail? What is the bonds? You know, where do we go with some of that? You know, is it, are people being housed in jails strictly because they can't afford to pay the bail? You know, and if that's the case, maybe we better look at the way we're addressing that. You know, if we're not, if we're not at risk to the community, they just simply don't have the thousand dollars to pay the bail or bond or whatever it is, then maybe we need to evaluate what the level of that bond is. And that's all part of what the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council is working on also.
Which, that fits a lot of folks up here. We have heavily service-based economy, lower wage jobs, and that could blow up a person and a family's life, right? Like they lose their job, impacts childcare, the whole family system. As a social worker, I used to work with families and occasionally I saw this happening. It was devastating, a sort of horrible effect. So I'm really glad that there's a lot of hard looks happening. And then the taxpayers, right? We're spending money to be in jail. What is it per day? Fifty?
Thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-five right now.
Yeah. So every day they're sitting there because they...
Depending on which side of the numbers we look at.
I will say that our judges and magistrates have embraced this. It's called a praxis is the tool. And they have embraced it, and they really do follow many of our recommendations as far as release and what the conditions are. And so I personally have seen a very big shift in those who are detained in jail. We do a very good job at release here compared. I just went to that meeting yesterday, and it was a roomful of pre-trial professionals. And Detroit is being sued right now. And so, you know, that representative was there. And so we do a very good job here. We can always do better. But we do actually, I have seen a very big shift over the last few years.
All right. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Shree.
Motion carries. Thank you, Shree. Every item, B4, Resolution Authorizing Road Commission to Purchase Surety and Fidelity Bonds for Board Members. Is there a staffer that would like to explain what this is? Would you like to come up? Not you, Dave. I'm sorry.
No, Dave asked to pull.
Yeah. As a matter of practice, we no longer take public comment during these items. Public comment is at the beginning of the meeting, and that's what we've told people in the past.
The gentleman who pulled it doesn't get to say why he has to have it pulled?
We can't answer any questions if we have no idea what the question is.
Right. And that's what first public comment is for? That's what we've said in the past meetings, and that's the practice we've been following. Could you just explain what this is?
Yeah, Phil Mazer, Finance Manager, Road Commission. This resolution is presented from our self-insurance pool. They're able to underwrite fidelity insurance for commissioners. So by statute, the Board of County Commissioners has to approve that resolution before we can go out and purchase that. So it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, so what does this cover?
The public official bonds.
Okay.
For our five commissioners.
And why is this coming for our Board?
Because the county Board is the one that determines the amount of the bond and how we purchase it.
Okay. So who's the staffer you work with on, at the county level on this?
I was involved in this, but yes, it's coming because by state law, which is indicated on page forty-six, this Board has to approve the Road Commission's purchase of that insurance coverage.
Okay. But it's no cost to us?
No, they'll pay for a hundred percent of the cost of the premium.
Okay.
But it has to come through here before they can go out and secure that coverage.
Okay, so it's kind of just a procedural thing that, for whatever reason, there's an obscure state law that says we have to prove that you're going to do this with your own money?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Wheelock?
So the ten thousand dollars, is that per commissioner or is that for the group?
Per commissioner.
Okay.
And that's pretty standard across road commissions.
When I read it, I was just kind of confused as to whether that was a total or if it was per commissioner. So we're good.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the authorization of the Road Commission to purchase surety and fidelity bonds for county Board of Road Commissioners members.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Wheelock, second by Brad. Any discussion?
At time of discussion, can we call upon members of the public to ask them questions? Is that within our...
I think that's appropriate if the Board sees that that's fit.
If you'd like to, Brad. I mean, I'm on a lot of allergy medicine right now.
It's cool. It's fine. Well, under the circumstances, I'll take this opportunity to ask Mr. Petrov just what his thoughts were as far as why he wanted to remove it. And thanks for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you again. Dave Petro, Interlocken. I saw this on the agenda. It's a better explanation. I was hoping to get some explanation about what it's about, okay? It is to protect the members of the Road Commission pretty much from things that arise out of errors and omissions. Basically, if they do something wrong, they're protected in court, which is strange to me that we even have to do that. I mean, just remember, the last, previous county commission got zero pay for the whole year. Well, got a dollar, okay, for a whole year. And at this time in our history, the Road Commission is involved in some very questionable decision-making. We're not sure where it's going and things like that. I would like them to know that they may suffer some penalty if they do not wish to do what the public deserves and things like that. Rather than saying, well, we'll go ahead and do what's best for our, I don't know, business community or something like that, which is not the way it should be. We want people to feed... We want people to feel that what they're doing is costing them like it will cost us, okay, because we have to pay the bills for all this stuff in the future, so anyway.
Thanks, Dave.
I would kind of be against it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oh, sorry.
So just, just, I guess, to Sunny's point, I agree that the way this now therefore be resolved, the way it's written here, it sounds like it's $10,000 total. There's nothing in this language that makes it sound like it's per commissioner. Just for clarity, what we're voting on, that language should be added. If it is indeed $10,000 per, that's different than $10,000.
You're right.
Yeah, and that was my confusion when I read it also.
So I think it should be amended if we're going to adopt those, and it should be very clear what we're actually adopting.
Brad, how many members are you talking? Five? Five? So would like to.
If you just say $10,000 per.
Motion maker would like to.
Yeah, I'm fine with that because that was the question when I read the resolution initially also, was it total or was it per commissioner?
So the motion is to include that this is for five, five people, so it'll be $50,000 total. Okay, any further questions?
I'll just make, just make a point and give Dave some, some information. It's, having been a trustee in a township, it's common that all elected officials are covered by insurance when they're acting on behalf of the government entity that they support, because you're, most of these people are taking positions of, for nominal pay. And as everybody knows, anybody can sue anybody, so to expect a person to cover their own legal expenses, et cetera, if there's a lawsuit, I'll just tell you right now, I have not served four years as a trustee with that hang over my head if I was obligated to pay any cost or anything in that, in that regard. So it's a very common, it's not just for the road commission. And hopefully we have insurance.
And with errors and omissions insurance, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, but it, but if there's gross negligence or willful wrongdoing, I mean, that's not going to cover that. So to your point, I mean, I just want to say that I do hear Mr. Petrov's point, and but I agree with Commissioner LaPointe, like if we're doing, if we're asking volunteers to do stuff to also put them under threat of litigation, and we just wouldn't end up with, with anyone wanting to serve, I wouldn't think. So I'm comfortable with this as amended.
Are there commissioners volunteers? Do they not receive any services?
No, they're paid better than us, I think. I remember the numbers, but.
Do you know?
Is it a per meeting stipend?
I do not know off the top of my head.
Mr. Merrick, do you know?
I believe it's $5,000 plus per diem.
Per diem for a whole year.
Oh, that's not volunteer.
I got an idea for my.
Just, I think clarity and transparency in this discussion is helpful, so let's just.
Andy Merrick, Grand Travers County Road Commission. I believe our base pay for road commissioners is $5,000. We also receive a per diem for attending meetings.
Regular meetings or special meetings?
We, we are not paid a per diem for our sta, our monthly meeting, any special meetings, any other meetings that we attend that are approved through our board policy. We are, we do receive a per diem.
Similar to what we have?
I believe so, I have not seen your policy.
Right, no, it's, I'm saying it sounds like pretty much what we have, and so it's $5,000 per year, just to be clear.
I believe that's five or 55. I can't recall the exact number, but it's less than $6,000 for a commissioner. There is additional for the chair and for the vice chair.
Okay, which is again reflective of this board. We have the same situation, and my only other point, I appreciate the statements made, and also this is required by Michigan law 224.7 provides and requires, they're required to have official bonds for this insurance, so it's.
It's what it is.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on to item B6, Tribal Council Allocation of 2% Fund, page 69 in your packet.
I have, I have contended for 20-plus years that the Grand Travers Ban do not comply with the compact between the Grand Travers Ban of Ottawa, Chipewa Indians, and Governor John Engler, that specifically outlines how 2% money has to be paid back to the community. They have never followed that procedure. They continue to not follow that procedure, and therefore I have never one time accepted the 2% grant applications. And I won't be except, I won't be approving this either.
And what, I'm not familiar enough to know with the, with the procedure, what are they not complying with in your estimation?
The, the way the compact is written, first of all, the funds have to go back to the governmental entities, and then a, then a committee or a group of people determine who gets the money. Grand Travers Ban decides who gets the money. They cut the checks to those individuals.
I'm going to make one statement, and with all due respect to my colleagues, if we're going to talk about honoring commitments, I would invite every person to visit all of the treaties that we have made with indigenous nations of this land over the last hundreds of years, and how many of them we both have and continue to break. I'm not making a statement about what the business is doing, I'm making a statement about what the United States governments do. So just feel like I have to say that.
And I also recognize that the state of Michigan did not fulfill their part of the compact either. Also, there's the fact that the compact expired in October of 2012, and it's not been renewed.
Okay, all right. Would anyone care to move to approve that? Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by LaPointe, second by Kofia. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Jewitt?
No.
Hunley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Klaus?
No.
Wheelock?
No.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Henchel?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay, move on in our agenda. I'm sure we'll readdress that in the future. We are on Department Items, Revised Purchasing Policy, page 71. Mr. Forsyth, is it you that worked on the purchasing?
This was, yeah, this was, this was drafted by Sarah Adams with my input and as well as Finance Department's input and Nate's final review and approval. But we did take the comments received at the last board meeting. We did revise the purchasing policy. We did increase the amount necessary for sealed bids and board approval per the comments received at the last board meeting. We increased that to $25,000. We did remove my deal from the exclusions. My deal is still an option if going through competitive bidding is not what makes sense. And we also added in additional language about the administrator's office providing monthly reporting to the board when it comes to purchases authorized by administration. So that's the sum and substance of what we prepared. It is a red line version, and it shows the highlights as well where we've added language. So if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Okay, so as I understand it, this will actually, in some ways, increase our, yeah, it'll increase our oversight, because anything over $5,000 will be received in a monthly report?
Correct.
That's correct. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the revised purchasing policy. Support.
Okay, moved by Wheelock, supported by Brad. Who had their hand up first?
It doesn't matter.
Commissioner LaPointe.
I, I motion to divide, I move to divide the motion. There are several items in here that I'm going to propose changing, so I think we need it probably best to handle those individually, to give everybody an option to go yea or nay on what I'm going to propose.
Okay, just for clarity, can you tell us what you want to divide out?
Okay, well, I need a second on my.
Well, you might get one if you tell us what you're saying.
Okay, what it is, is there's actually three things. Two are pre-prodestined, but one of them is the third, if you look on page 75, I believe it is, where they have the table of the spending limits, all of my changes or all my recommendations are in that area. If you look at the table, the third item there is $5,000 to $24,999. I prefer personally to see that $5,000 to $20,000 versus the $25,000 going to, $20,000 is doubling what it currently is, and I think that's adequate. I think any, and the reason why $20,000, typically you can't buy a car for less than $20,000, so I, that's, that's a vehicle, so that's one of the reasons on that. The second one is where it says that it's got to be in the budget in the other window there. I like to make sure it's in the original budget that we get to approve during the court at the beginning of the year. So if the, if it's between $5,000 and $20,000 and in the original budget, the administrator has the ability to go for it. If it's, budgets could change during the course of the year. Sometimes we're made very much aware of it, sometimes it probably just slips through. So I'd like to keep a focus on the original budget. And the third item is where it says approving entry up to the $20,000, where it says department head and county administrator, I like to add the wording, and the county administrator may at his or her discretion also request board approval. And I, on the approving entity down under the third element, which would then be $5,000 to $20,000, if you would, where it says department head and county administrator, I wanted to add the wording after department head and county administrator, and the county administrator may at his or her discretion also request board approval. Reason I put, thought that'd be of value is if, if a department head is approaching the administrator, and it may be a questionable purchase, at his discretion or her discretion, they may want to advise the board before the fact versus having the total onus on them to go to approve it or not approve it. It just gives them a little more latitude, a little more cover perhaps on a purchase.
Okay, Sunny, do you have a suggestion on how to deal with it?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I believe staff included every single item that we asked for at our last meeting. At any time, the administrator has the ability to ask the board of commissioners about any decision that he's making. You know, the difference whether it's $20,000 or $25,000, I don't think makes a difference. The key piece of this is the fact that I believe the change in the purchase policy was proposed for the idea of allowing us to conduct the regular business of the county. You know, the, the simple matter that, you know, we couldn't order a dog for the sheriff's department because it was over a $10,000 thing, and we could have very well missed the opportunity to purchase that dog when we needed it. I believe, you know, I truly believe staff did everything we asked for, and the most important piece of this, this revised policy has in place is the fact that they're responsible to report back to us on anything that's spent over $5,000. You know, I went through a period of time where consultants were contracted by administration, and the board of commissioners had no say as to those consultant contracts because they were done on a monthly basis or such, and the, and the purchasing policy at that time was $30,000 a year, and there was no reporting requirement. You know, I, I don't think we need Gordy's motion. He, he's proposing it. I would ask that we vote on the original motion, and that be to accept the, the purchasing policy as outlined.
All right, Gordy?
Just a comment on reporting. Yes, I think it's, it's important that the report after the fact, but after the fact in some of these things, it's a done deal. It's.
That's what you pay him for.
I'm, I'm sorry, I think I have a floor. I think it's a little too late, so again, this is just, there's three changes I recommended. One was, you know, the, we asked them to come up with a recommendation, he put $25,000. I prefer $20,000 personally. I think that's a fair amount that they can operate at their discretion, reporting after the fact.
Okay, so I think procedurally, the proper way it was for you to make a motion to amend the motion on the floor with, and if you want to divide that into three parts.
Yeah, I mean, just on each one, may, the reason you divide the motion is, each one, there's three different things, points to make.
Okay, so.
The first, the first one.
Are you moving all three? Are you moving the first point at this time?
Yeah.
Okay. And that is specifically?
Changing from 20, from the third line item there from $5,000, currently being proposed $5,000 to $24,999. I propose changing it to $19,999.
Okay, that's on page 75, under item eight, there's a table that it's referring to.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second for Gordy's motion to amend? Seeing none?
I can second.
Oh, you're going to second?
I'll second it, sure.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to amend the motion, the motion on the floor. This is where we get off in the weeds, so try to stay with us.
All right.
All right, so the motion on the floor would lower the, the purchasing authority to 20, $19,999 and 99 cents?
And 99 cents?
I'd be comfortable with $20,000. Okay, $20,000.
And I'm, I'm assuming that the, the next step in that table will also be changed to $20,000 instead of $25,000.
Correct, correct.
$20,000 and over.
Okay, is everybody clear on the motion? Any discussion?
I have two things. One specific to this is, I guess, the, the question really is kind of about vehicles, and if, if we're wanting to change this policy so that we can allow the administration to go ahead, and if vehicles are in the, you know, in the budget, and they can just go ahead and take care of that without having to, to ask us each time. And that's, I mean, it's a good question, I get.
That's just an example.
Yeah, well, but I mean, but it's, that's, that's a, a big thing that's kind of right in that price point, right? So it, it's a, it's a valid thing, and it, it's, it's a fair question. The other thing that maybe Commissioner Wheelock's right, that, that just with reporting, it handles my question. The one other item that we had talked about in the previous meeting was the idea of multiple purchases from the same vendor over the course of a 12-month period, that that trips over whatever threshold. And do we need something in here to specifically address that, or are we just saying that, you know, they report back, and then we'll realize three months in, hey, wait, wait a second, this is over $20,000, and really we should be looking at a process for that? So that's kind of in this $25,000 question, but I'll, I don't know where to put that question. Anyway, the $25,000, I think I'm satisfied with $25,000 as a, as a threshold, so I, I was.
Okay, any further discussion?
I would note that when we, when we purchase vehicles, we rarely, with the exception of maybe a vehicle is damaged in an accident, purchase vehicles one at a time. You know, we, we always purchase vehicles in groups, and the vast majority of the vehicles we purchase are for the sheriff's department, and they're on a, and on a bid package group, and they are always budgeted and approved in the budget.
Okay, ready to vote? So a yes vote on this motion means you want $20,000 is the cap, a no vote is you want 25. So roll call vote, please.
Hunley?
No.
Kofia?
No.
Klaus?
No.
Wheelock?
No.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Jewitt?
No.
Henchel?
No.
Okay, that motion fails. Your next point, Gordy?
The next one was in the, right next to the purchasing process, where it says it must be in three written quotes, purchase order, and in the budget. I prefer the word in there, in the original budget, because that's the one that we review, and I assume take a look at the capital proposals that we approve at the beginning of the year. And budgets get changed around during the course of the year, minds get shifted. So I'd just like to have it, if they're going to purchase something in that price range, I'd like to think it was in the original budget, without coming back to the board. We approved the budget, so just one, one word change there.
Okay. Okay, so a motion by LaPointe, seconded by Kofia to change, now tell me which page is this word on?
Seventy-five in the middle column, third one down, three written quotes, purchase order, and in original budget.
Okay, okay, discussion?
Every amendment to the budget is passed by the board of commissioners. Every, every amendment to the budget is passed by the board of commissioners, no matter how big it is. Uh, about the only time we will make a large purchase during the year is because of a air conditioner unit failing, a, you know, a HVAC program, a furnace operator, a vehicle being destroyed in an accident, those are the kinds of purchases that we make during the year that would not be in the original budget, and, and no one can anticipate those. But the key part about that is there are no amendments to the book, to the budget that are not approved by the board of commissioners.
Okay. Questions?
Uh, I would like to read that entire, uh, cell in that table, which is three written quotes, purchase order, and in-budget expenditure report to board. So I, my concern, I think what Commissioner Lapointe is saying is that if we're going to say, yeah, you guys have the authority to go ahead and, uh, make these changes, uh, as long as they were in the original budget, this, this is really saying, if it's in this, in this band of five to twenty-five thousand dollars, the purchasing process is, we get three written quotes, we get a purchase order, and it's presented in the budget expenditure report that we get at a board meeting, kind of after the fact. I, I think that's what that's saying, as opposed to, and it's in the budget. Um, so I'm not, I'm not entirely sure that adding just the word in the original budget is doing it, because this is a, a reporting feature. We could, um, I don't know.
Uh, it, it would be in the budget. I mean, by law, it has to be in the budget. We, we have certain budget centers, like contracted services, equipment, personnel costs, that, that expenditure, if we can't identify a line item in the budget, then it's an illegal expenditure. By law, it has to be within, all expenditures have to coincide with, with a budget line item.
Right, right, okay.
Gordy?
Okay. The point is, I'm assuming, and we haven't been through a budget process, but I'm assuming at the beginning of this, there's a capital plan that's put in place by every department, and we get a chance to look at it, and we basically approve it, and that gets factored into the budget in terms of dollars. Um, and so we are conscious of these large expenditures, of, in that, over twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, during the course of the year, monies can get shifted around in the budget, where there will be, actually be a, a purchase, in this case, of twenty-five thousand dollars of a capital good, that we had no idea, was never presented when we had a capital, a discussion on capital expenditures. Um, there's an example, I think, of Department of Veterans Affairs, they just had a contingency amount, uh, that was in the, uh, was never, a, a vehicle wasn't identified, it was a contingency amount, we, budget was approved, and in this case, you're saying they could move that money into the budget, make that change, and buy a vehicle that we weren't even aware of. We'd be able, we made aware of it after the fact. So it just, I, it's not that big of a deal, but I, my take is, you put a budget in place, most places I've been, had experience, the budget stays firm and doesn't constantly get modified during the course of the year. Now, fund accounting, I realize things are a little different, but when we spend time on the budget at the beginning, the capital plan, I like to keep, keep going back to the original budget, and if, if something has to change, bring it to the board of a capital expenditure in that price range.
Okay. I just, I'd ask for a clarification from staff. Procedurally, what would be the difference between having the word "original budget" and, and "budget"?
Well, to Mr. Lapointe's, uh, point, the budget is adjusted periodically through the year by the department head, so if the school of thought is to be, once the board of commissioners approves a fifteen million dollar budget for a department, is it then up to the department head or the elected official to monitor and manage that fifteen million dollar appropriation across all of their departments or their divisions? Or is it the board of commissioners' job to manage that budget as approved? So there are two, two schools of thought there. There are occasions where, uh, in my experience from the sheriff's department, we would recognize that we don't have staffing, but we do need some type of a contracted service that we would request movement of funds from personnel lines to, uh, that contracted services line to get that service accomplished. That has always been in the department head and elected officials' purview, and it is always brought to the board in terms of an adjustment of that size.
We do not pass a line item budget. We pass budgets based on, on budget centers. You know, the fact that the sheriff chooses to, you know, he's down on personnel costs, he wants to contract for services or something, that is within his budget, and it is a part of his approved budget. We don't approve his budget based on this many dollars can only be used for personnel costs.
We prepare a line item budget, um, because that is what is required of the departments, but overall, I agree with Mr. Wheelock, that the, the overall budget is approved. We monitor that budget, um, Mr. Bot monitors, monitors that budget with department heads as well. Every budget adjustment is received and looked at. We try very hard to not tap into the personnel lines, uh, to make these type of adjustments and expenditures, but from time to time, they do, they do occur, and that is presented to the board.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Okay. Once again, this is not the vote on approving the policy, this is the vote to add the word "original" to the, to the word, in front of the word "budget," so. All right, roll call vote, please.
Kofia?
No.
Klaus?
No.
Wheelock?
No.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Jewitt?
No.
Hunley?
No.
Did you say no?
Oh, sorry, yes, no, sorry.
Yes, no? Uh, Henshaw?
We're having a bad day.
No, thank you.
Okay, so it failed.
Okay. And, uh, Gordy, did you have one more for us?
Okay, the last one was, um, in the, uh, third column, if you would, third row down, add the wording, "And the county administrator may at his or her discretion also request board approval." Um, again, if, if the, it's just may or may not. It isn't saying that they must, it's just giving, making sure that they know that if there's something that may be controversial, or the board may have some input, is just giving him the cover to say, to the department manager, "On this one, before I approve it, although it falls within my purview, I'd like to get board approval."
Okay, I'll support this one. Um, could you give us the exact wording one more time for the clerk?
"And the county administrator may at his or her discretion also request board approval." That's just so the department heads know that he, when they're having a conversation along some of this line-
It's an option, yeah.
-that he may say, "Hey, I don't know this, uh, on this particular one, I'd like to get the board to input."
Any discussion?
Well, he always has that authority.
I agree.
You know, that's, that's the way we conduct business. If the, if the administrator has any questions about any issues that's coming to his office, he has the authority by which to say, "No, I'm not gonna make a decision until I contact the board of commissioners." You know, I, that's standard policy.
Yep.
Well, is that, this is just making it clear-
Yeah, so I agree, this makes it more clear if, if, if he's being questioned as to why he's not approving something, he can say, point at that and say, "I'm choosing the option to take this one to the board." So, I'm fine with that. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Abs.
Henshaw?
Yes. Okay, that motion carries. All right, so now we're back to the main policy. Any discussion on the-
We have the motion on the floor to approve the purchasing policy, and we're, now we have one amendment.
Yes, so the motion on the floor is to approve the purchasing policy as presented with the one amendment of adding, uh, the, the sentence that Gordy just gave us.
Second.
What? Oh, it's already on the floor, okay.
I have a motion.
Yep, so we're back to the original motion. Any discussion on the original motion?
One second.
Okay.
The county administrator has the, uh, authority to come back to the board, yeah, that's all. Sorry.
All right, are we ready to vote?
Wait a minute. Oh, uh, the, my question about that one, it's on the floor now, right?
It's on the floor.
Okay, so my question about, did we need any kind of explicit verbiage about the instance of, of a contract that's coming in multiple times in the course of a year, where maybe it's set up, and it's under the threshold, so it never needs board approval? Is there, do we need a mechanism, or is just the reporting sufficient, and if we get to that point, we'll address it?
So, i- if there's an addition to an existing contract, I believe, you know, if you had a, say you had a twenty-four thousand dollar contract that was approved by the administrator, and that was gonna incur another two thousand dollar charge, uh, my understanding is that whole thing would at that point come to the board?
Yes, absolutely, come to the board.
Okay.
But, and, but so if you had a twenty-four thousand dollar, uh, service contract that, that ran for three months, and then on the fourth month, you had another twenty-four thousand dollar service contract to the same vendor for the same services, and then four months later, you had another three-month contract?
No, I, it would come back to the board.
Those contracts can't be entered into anyway.
What?
They're, you know, they're, if, if it's a, if we have a service contract, and over the year, it's above that twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, it would come back to the board before we hit that threshold.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Along that, I thought the same thing, um, where somebody can divide up an invoice, split it up, it's, it's a sixty thousand dollar purchase to buy this, well, give me three invoices for this, this, and this. I don't know how you, and I've faced that in the past, I don't know how you put wording in to prevent that, you just would have to, eventually it would come to light-
Right.
-and, uh, I would think the board would take a dim view of anybody who was caught-
Right. So there's an incentive inherent not to do that, so, yeah.
Yeah.
We, I think we would eventually catch that, yeah.
But it has happened in the past, you know?
That person's no longer here.
Right. How long ago, though, before it was caught, right?
Oh, I don't know. Two years.
How long? How many years?
Two years.
Yeah. It's, and may I, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of you, and it's for, um, our longer, uh, our longer serving members of the board? Were changes made to the way we do the process to catch those things going forward? Is this addressing that fully, or has it already been addressed in the past, so that we are not going to see, like, the consultants charging by month?
Well, two things happened. One, when, when we had the issue, we changed the purchasing policy, so it's, it went back to the ten thousand dollars originally. But I think what we've addressed in this policy is the fact that all of those purchases over five thousand dollars have to be reported back to the board commissioners. Well, you know, he, he may get approval for, for one month's worth, but you're not gonna get approval for the second month if, if you try, if you try doing that again.
Yep.
You know, at least I would-
I would say that the increased oversight covers it. I'm, I'm comfortable with it, and, you know, in the future, it can change. Uh, this policy is meant to be revisited regularly. In fact, I think it's actually in the, end of the policy, it says we're supposed to revisit this at least every three years. So, and, and I guess, it, more of a, a broad view is, this policy right here has more to do with what this board is accountable for than almost anything else we do. It's, it's, this is what we do, we watch the public. So, we can revisit this at any time. Okay? Are we clear? Uh, main motion on the floor is to approve with that one amendment. Roll call vote, please.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes. Motion carries. You're on to unfinished business recommendations for appointments, community mental health, and commission on aging, page eighty in your packet. Uh, I chaired that committee.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we make these appointments individually instead of as a resolution?
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask if we could do, um, there's, there's only one there's been any question on us, that's the, uh, the, the appointment of Mary Maroy or Barb Willing, and if the, if the board's okay with that, I'd like to handle, if we could do it in two motions, just to keep things moving, we do have a-
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Mary Maroy to the community mental health board.
Support.
Okay. Moved by Wheelock, supported by Kofia. Any discussion? Commissioner Lapointe?
Um, I actually talked, Mary called me, she's in my district, and I had a long conversation with her, and I mentioned to her that I was not on the ad hoc committee, so I really didn't have any detail, and I have to, uh, kind of pretty much bow to their recommendation, that they, they looked at this, made the, made the call that they felt was the correct one. And she mentioned to me her credentials and sent me a copy of her resume, and they are certainly extensive. Um, I thought the time was, however, that we were appointing, uh, there were two people up for reappointment, and we were reappointing one of them, and then we were adding somebody new to the, um, to the, uh, board. And oftentimes, it's good to have a fresh set of eyes and a fresh look, and, and so I, I thought at first glance, after I had talked to her, that, uh, I understood that she had the qualifications, but there was another person that, uh, and I think making changes on all of these boards is a good idea. That being said, after that, um, I actually went to the, uh, I, I had to admit I didn't know much about what that board did, so I spent some time, and actually probably looked at, um, more than two dozen of their minutes of the meetings to get an idea of what, uh, what they do, et cetera, and what her participation is, and, uh, the size of their budget, et cetera. And getting a little bit off topic here, but my reaction was, why don't they just hire her, versus sitting, going to one meeting a month for an hour and a half, she could be more effective with her background, and they certainly have the budget, they have a seventy million dollar budget, and, um, so that would be my, that was my first, first thought. Um, but a- after looking, and I, you know, heard some of the testimony on her background and looking at it, um, I'll kind of go against my first reaction of, it's, it's a good thing to put new people into these positions, not always have the same board members. I've, I've changed my mind, so I would support, um, appointing her as one of the, uh, one of the members.
Okay. Mr. Wheelock?
Well, I will note, in the, in the interview process, we had three candidates who interviewed very well, um, you know, and we are making three appointments to this board. One of them, Dr. Dan Lathrop, is a new appointment to this board. Um, you know, the, the three candidates who interviewed, based on strictly the interview process, you could probably flip a coin and say, "Okay, I, I would take this one or that one." You know, it doesn't, doesn't make a whole lot of difference necessarily, but, um, I guess, I, I truly believe, you know, and we had the discussion at the ad hoc committee, you know, Mary was one of my first choices, the committee chose to make a different recommendation, which is fine, you know, and that is what it is, but, you know, as, with hindsight and hearing all the comment and getting the, a number of emails, and more importantly, knowing the history and the connection of what Mary has brought to this organization and, and DHS over the years, uh, I truly believe it is essential that she be there. Uh, we also have to remember that the community mental health board operates on a completely different premise. The whole idea of a governance board, whereas the, the committee or, or the mental health board sets the policies, but from that point on, it's hands-off. The director has sole control over how that department is operated. You know, and, you know, we, we tend to get into little, little arguments about whether we should spend twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand. You know, they're, they've got a sixty-five, seventy million dollar budget, and he has sole control over that. You know, so, uh, I think it's absolutely crucial that we have the most knowledgeable people we have available on that board of health.
Okay. I'll make, my comment is, uh, I had no problem with Mary Maroy serving, I think she's done a great job. Uh, when the committee met, uh, it was, it was a long, hard deliberation over who we would recommend. Uh, we did give a unanimous recommended, recommendation, uh, that did not include Mary, but, you know, that's why it comes back to this board, it could change. Um, I've applied for many boards, uh, in between my service on this board, I've, I've applied for a lot of appointments and passed up for all of them. But, uh, one thing, I always felt like it was an even playing field, and if our policy was, we will, uh, we will make a recommendation and, uh, then count the email- And if our policy was, we will, we will make a recommendation and then count the emails that we get or count the people that vouch for this person, I think we would have gotten, because we interviewed 10 people, we would have gotten all 10 people sending information. And so I guess we we just need an even playing field in the future. If if we're going to say, if you can find 25 or 30 people to vouch for you, then you're automatically in. Or if we're just gonna look at resumes, why even have the the ad hoc committees just look at resumes and somebody make a motion? So I'm I'm gonna stick with the the committee, the committee's recommendation for my vote, just simply based on that, that we decided at that time. And we never, we never told the candidates, have a whole bunch of people send us information and and vouch for you and and that'll increase your chances. So I feel like it's an unfair unfair way to way to roll it out. But then again, I'm I'm great with Mary as well. Commissioner Kofia?
So we did receive, I lost count how many emails from folks in the community on on this proposed appointment. But that to me, the real, a couple of things. After I started getting the emails, I started to, you know, try to educate myself because I wasn't on the ad hoc, what the criteria was, what the recommendation request was from CMH's board. And I I guess I just want to note a couple of points that I feel like are relevant to this decision. The request was to reappoint Mary Maroy and Randall Camps. The request was also to appoint a consumer of CMH services and a mental health professional. We are not being asked to appoint a mental health professional. Mr. Dan Lathrop, Dr. Dan Lathrop is a professional. He's a doctor, but he is a podiatrist, not a mental health professional. So we are not doing that. And we are not appointing a consumer. So I feel like with a board that has such a huge and complex task in front of it and a huge time commitment, what is it, you know, Hoatland Lake and railing and Traverse City and six, six hour days with two different committee meetings, a huge commitment and the complexity of the work and the critical need for expertise as we have many issues with mental health concerns in our community that it's really, I I really felt like it was important for us to look at, you know, with great gratitude and respect to all who applied, how can we build in as much institutional knowledge and understanding of the complexities and and passion for working with people who are vulnerable populations? And Mary coming from director, former director of the Grand Travers and Leland County Department of Health and Human Services, her very well-known work with families and children and her, you know, her attendance records, you can see the level of dedication and commitment and the expertise. And that felt, before I got a single email, those were pieces that I really looked at and felt like were were really important for us to be thoughtful about. Some boards can afford lots of new blood all at once more than others. And I feel like stability on such a complex board is is just really critical. So with respect, I'm on an ad hoc right now and it would be challenging for me to have that, you know, us make a unanimous recommendation and then have it, you know, more pushback. And also, we are a deliberate body and I think it's not just about getting a bunch of emails. It really is about trying to be as thoughtful as we possibly can in a critical appointment to a critical service to our community. So I am very supportive of Ms. Maroy's appointment to this reappointment. And thankful for her dedication and grateful to all of the applicants who put put themselves forward. I so appreciate it.
Okay. Shall we vote? Roll call vote, please. Yeah, I'll I'll allow a comment because you are one of the applicants, but then we'll have to allow it for all applicants.
My name is Barb Willing. I'm the applicant that got the unanimous vote. Gordy, I'm also in your district. Ms. Kofia, this is the board that you chose not to be on and you threw a little fit for it. And yes, it is an important board. This, I do have the qualifications to be on this board because I didn't grandstand. I'm sorry I didn't get my friends to call all of you and harass you with emails and things like that. I can assure you that as a medical advocate and a legal advocate for the last 40 years, that I am very well familiar with this board. It appalls me actually that the director has in charge of $70 million and this board can just grant him carte blanche. And I think we need to keep track of that so that maybe the monies can be spent a little bit wisely. And I think that unless you give me the opportunity to show you what I can do, we may all miss out. Thank you.
Any other board applicants like to speak, just in fairness? Okay. All right. A roll call vote, please.
Read your motion.
The motion is to appoint Mary Maroy to the Community Mental Health, to reappoint her for the next, for her next term. Right?
Correct.
Okay.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Jewett?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Klaus?
No.
Wilak?
Yes.
Henchel?
No.
Motion carried.
Congratulations, Mary. Thank you for your service. Okay. I would like to move that the rest of the, the rest of the recommended appointments be approved with the exception of Barb Willing, who will serve as an alternate for any openings within the next year to the Northern Lakes Mental Health Board.
So who?
So this is.
Who's getting appointed?
Do you want me to read the, who who the other people are?
So this is to reappoint Randall Camps to Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Board for the three years, determining March 31st to 2020 as a general citizen. And to appoint Dan Lathrop to the Mental Health Board for the remainder of the three-year term ending 3/31/20. To appoint Tanya Cook to the Commission on Aging Advising Board for the three-year term through 2022. And to have Barb Willing as an alternate, who will be automatically appointed to any openings that may occur during this next year to Northern Lakes. There are none scheduled. But if somebody was to reappoint, she would fill that.
To the best of my knowledge, we've never, never appointed an alternate or designated an alternate. I I would, I would support the motion with the exception of that piece. I I'll support appointing Randall Camp, Dan Lathrop to CMH and Tanya Cook to the Commission on Aging. If a vacancy becomes available on the Community Mental Health Board, I believe we would re, we would re-advertise it and re-interview for candidates. And at that point, Barb would be more.
Well, we have a motion on the floor before we discuss it. Would anyone like to second my motion?
Support.
Okay. Ron's supported. My motion as presented.
So so the discussion is that I I can't support this motion with the with the designated alternate. We we've historically never designated an alternate to these kind of boards and I don't know why we would start now.
Legal, is there anything that would prevent us from preventing, appointing an alternate should a point, an opening come up?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. She has been through the process, so. But it's, it's fine. However, the board votes is fine with me. I just.
The other question I would have is that Dr. Dan Lathrop as mental health professional, we may be putting him in that, in the slot that is a point allotted for mental health professional. But is he in fact?
He has, he has a psychology degree and he worked at the state hospital.
Okay.
No, his, his, his application said that he took psychology courses in college. It did not say that he has a psychology. So there should be some clarification around, just so that we have an accurate reflection in the.
I believe, at least from my perspective, I'm not saying that I'm appointing Dan Lathrop as a mental health professional.
It's just written in the suggestive motion, so.
You know, because if we actually look at the requests from Community Mental Health, they ask for another consumer. And and we interviewed a consumer who they sent to be interviewed. And at least from my perspective, I wasn't comfortable that the individual was going to benefit the the complexity of this board.
If I could clarify, the mental health code prescribes what the makeup of this board is. They have to have so many people that are direct consumers, so many people that are secondary, like you have a a direct relative.
Right, sure.
And then mental health professional and, you know, there's prescribed positions. At this time, they already have their consumer. They don't need one to be in compliance with the mental health code.
Gotcha.
But for, they wanted an extra one, is what they're saying. So it was, it was a request, but not a requirement. And I, my understanding is it's the same with the mental health professional. They don't need one at this time. But correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, but my understanding is that the slots are, they're covered right now.
Actually, we're short a consumer.
I thought we have a consumer from Grand Travers. Nina?
We're short another consumer, a second consumer, according to the health.
Right. When, when the five counties came together, each one agreed, these are what we're providing. And Grand Travers provides one consumer, Nina Parker, I believe. Sure, sure. Step up and if you can add to clarifying.
I'm trying to remember the name of the gentleman who you appointed as the mental health professional, who ended up resigning from the board. He was a Catholic priest who had left. I can't remember his name, Jerry McCady. He had been appointed as a mental health professional. It is actually his position that is vacant. And so there was a very difficult time trying to fill it with a mental health professional. So what happened is, I think they, within the six counties, they did some shifting around and put another consumer position into Grand Travers County. And so that would then make the mental health professional be able to come out of another county. And so it really is a consumer position. I don't know what would happen. You know, I really don't know if it's okay to fill it with another individual. I I really don't know that. I've been kind of busy dealing with another position on that board, so I didn't really pay attention. We actually have a meeting tomorrow, but I know that's too late for your deliberation today.
Okay. So another county appointed a mental health professional?
I believe that there is, yes.
In place of a consumer?
I think it was Rose Denny and I'm I'm not, I think she might be from Ross Common County. I I really will know more tomorrow, but I know that it's too late for you.
Would we like to?
I have a question. Is there any time, I don't want to delay things, but there does seem, it seems like we should be clear on whether to appoint them or looking to make.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there any time if we were to table this particular question on?
Well, let's do this. I will amend my motion to remove Dan Lathrop from the appointment pending, we can deal with that later.
And so will we sort of.
So we'll have one spot open until.
Mary Maroy will be reappointing Randall Camps. Okay? Is that right? And then we're figuring out.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll, if if the second agrees, I'll make a friendly amendment to remove Dan Lathrop from the motion.
But your motion is still to appoint Randy Camp and maintain the alternate position.
Yep, and Tanya Cook to the Commission on Aging Board.
Right. And and keep the alternate for the Community Mental Health Board?
Yeah. Oh, Barb Willing, Willing, yeah. Of, yeah. Support. Okay.
And so a question on that. That feels like we're creating a new process. Because we have, we have a process in place for all of our boards and commissions that anytime there's an opening or vacancy, that people can just submit applications. So does this in effect create a new process wherein with the Community Mental Health Board appointments, we are allowing for an alternate to essentially kind of not, not re-interview? I just want to understand your thought process and know whether we're creating something.
Sure. What I've, what I've seen in the past is sometimes you have somebody back out after appointments have been made. But hey, you just did interviews a few months ago. And in those cases, even though it hasn't been designated as an alternate, we've gone back and used someone. Well, we just did interviews. We had this one person that didn't get appointment, pointed was, fit the bill for the appointment. And the board has, without doing a new round of interviews, picked that person who has recently interviewed. Actually, it's similar to what we just did with the tattle appointment.
Right.
Last month. Because we had someone that recently interviewed. We had no other applicant, no other applicants on file since they've been through the process. So we've used alternates in the past. All I'm just saying is, I'm just saying it out loud instead of waiting.
And is that, if that, a vacancy, just for clarification, if that vacancy, if a vacancy were to come up, does the general public still get the opportunity to apply for that position? Or are we going with no, no sort of open process and just putting the person who was the alternate into the position?
Right. Well, we just had the open process and the interviewing. We've got the people that are interested at this time. So.
No, I'm saying if a vacancy comes.
So, yeah, right. So.
If somebody resigns, somebody.
Yeah, like in November, if somebody was to resign, with my motion, we wouldn't go through that process again. We, the alternate would automatically go in if she fit what was needed on the board.
And that's been an informal practice, but not a formal procedure. Staff, can you speak to that? I just want to understand if this is a formal, a formalized process or an informal thing? It's just sort of been standard procedure? Is it written down anywhere?
I'm trying to catch up with the rules.
It's not written down anywhere.
It's not. It says, it's 14.2 and 14.1, correct?
Of the board rules?
Of the board rules. And it says, appointment of commissioners to other boards, commissions and authorities should be made by the chairperson at the organizational meeting and ratified by a majority. That's 14.1. And then vacancy is on other boards. Specifically says, the chairperson shall appoint an ad hoc committee to review applications for the position and make recommendations for the appointment to the full board. So the practice, well, it's not explicit in the board rules.
I mean, the board rules, you make it sound like when there's an opening, that the chair is supposed to pull, pull together an ad hoc, do interviews, then appoint, and then the ad hoc, right, like there's an appointment process. That, that's the way the rules are, you think?
Hey, so with the recent tattle board appointment, my recollection is, we had an appointee. The appointee subsequently backed out, I think. And we did open it again and didn't get any, there was only one applicant. So what we really did there was, we we reopened the process with the one applicant. Then the question was, do we go through the interview process again or do we just say, look, we already interviewed her? We're good. Or her, I think, which is different.
Still open the process.
But we did open the, exactly. I mean, that's what I'm saying. It's, it is different from having an alternate. And I, you know, we're, we're getting tired and I didn't bring donuts and I'm sorry. But anyway, yeah, it's, so it's, it is a difference and I think there's, it seems relevant.
Well, let's, let's.
I think there's a question about how how efficient do you want to be and how fluid do you want to be with these appointments? And I know from previous experience that if you have qualified applications and qualified applicants for a position, we have historically stacked those applicants and kept them in reserve in the event that a vacancy arises. Depending on, of course, the timeframe that that goes on and goes by, there may be some relevance to that type of thought. If it's years or months that may take, may be considered as well. I think you're a little more fluid if you have the ability to do these types of things. That's my. Well, I think we've held the applications, but if if we had a vacancy within a year or six months or whatever, we've contacted those individuals who applied before and asked them if they were still interested. But we still had them come in for interviews if we were going to appoint it. We didn't just choose one of those applicants.
Yep. Commissioner LaPointe?
If the goal is to confuse me, you guys have done a great job. Get back to the matter at hand. My understanding is, there's three openings. Two people are qualified to fit the slots because they've been designated as professionals or consumers or other. And we don't have a, you're saying Dan Lathrop doesn't fit the bill of the consumer, which is the opening position that we have. And we're gonna go back to the drawing board and try to cast a net to bring in a person who would fill that category. So the position will just remain open until we can find a qualified individual.
We just need clarification.
Pardon me?
We need clarification to to know if we can appoint Dan Lathrop as recommended.
State requirements for each board.
Okay, okay. Just my take, editorial comment on that is, I mean, this is not a small board. It's a 16-member board. It's not a small organization. They have a huge professional staff. And it just doesn't, for for them to put mandates, we need these types of board members with these types is, is, I think, goes beyond reason from my take, but go ahead.
Is it state law? I don't know that it's generated. Is it state law? I don't know that it's generated by the CMH.
The, the mental health code.
State law requirements.
So if we had a.
Yeah, state law.
If we had a single county CMH, we would still have to have a sixteen member board. It's, it's in the mental health code. And just to keep things moving along, because we do a lot to cover yet today, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we remove the alternate position from the motion. If the second's okay with that?
Fine with that.
Okay.
Could I suggest that we just withdraw that motion and go back to an original motion to appoint Randall Camp to the board, to the Community Mental Health Board and Tanya Cook to the Commission on Aging and we, we take out all of the confusion?
That is the motion.
That's the motion now.
I know, but let's, let's take the amendment part all out of there.
Just restate it, Rob. Just, I'll just restate, the motion on the floor now is to reappoint Randall Camp as a Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Board for three years, term ending March thirty first, twenty twenty-two, and to appoint Tanya Cook to the Commission on Aging Advisory Board for three-year term through twenty twenty-two. Support. Okay. So that is the motion on the floor. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good.
I would ask, I would ask staff to contact CMH and find out whether we in fact do need to.
Do we have a clarification?
Member.
Mrs. Kramer is here to clarify the question.
I think she just told you everything and.
She did, but.
She was hoping she wouldn't have to come to the mic.
I'm Chris Kramer. I just came down to answer any questions because it sounded like there were quite a few of them. So part of what Mary said was actually the most accurate. We did have, when we agreed to the, the agreement on how the mental health professionals, how many people we were going to have on the board, and this is back then, the agreement we had, you know, when they originally got the board. We have so many people and they're in a certain type of position. I know that there was a lot going on at the organizational meeting. When Carl came in that day and talked to you, he mentioned, can we change this? And what happened was is we did appoint somebody to fill Jerry McCady's position. And, you know, there was a lot of back and forth. The lady did come to one or two meetings and then she stopped coming. CMH board did not let me know that. So we still had that position available. I was under the impression that it had been filled for months. And apparently she decided that she was not able to serve for whatever reason. So that is a mental health position. Now, they have played around because it's a ten-county, I believe, board?
Five.
Or, okay, six county. They have some flexibility between counties as to if the mental health professional is going to be from Grand Travers County or Osceola County or, you know, some other county. And so that's what they have, I guess, chose to do. And they've asked, do we want to give up that position and make it a consumer position to make their whole board, their entire board whole? Not just a representation from Grand Travers County. If that's what you would like to do, if you agree with that, then our board has to accept that we change the designation of that position.
Isn't, aren't the designations in the founding document?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so that would require a vote from all county boards to change that document. And that's the document that tells us how much we pay, six hundred eighty-two thousand dollars a year? If we're going to open that up for.
I'd love to open that.
Yeah. I knew somebody would say that.
So.
All right.
Yeah. So the position that we, going into this, the position that we were trying to fill was still a mental health, you know, professional, unless you choose to change it. We've, yeah, they've requested that and they requested that again in their letter. But no one has said, yeah, we'd like to consider that or not. So, so, you know, the positions you're filling are the positions that are available. And I, I tried to explain it, you know, in that, in the memo that told the ad hoc committee what they were going to do. That's the positions we have. If anybody has a question about whether or not we should have those, you know, I'm happy to answer it or we can go back and show you for years, you know, how this is, the process it's been. And it's not that this board can't, you know, choose to change that process. But it's been working really, really well for, you know, quite a long time. So just if you have any questions, anybody call me anytime.
I, I'd like to have our legal counsel review that founding document and the qualifications of Dr. Lathrop to see if he fits. And then we'll bring that back at a future meeting if that's all right.
And if we choose, if we determine that Grand Travers County needs to appoint a consumer, I'd like to see us advertise it based on that. I think it's very difficult to bring one consumer in with five other applicants to interview and try to figure out how that fits because it's not, it's not the side. And, you know, it's no disrespect for the consumer or anyone else, but, but this is a pretty complex operation. And, yeah, you know, with, with absolutely no disrespect, I'm not sure that the individual that we interviewed could possibly wrap his head around the entire operation. I don't think the big picture was, was focusable.
Okay, so we're gonna.
And that's, it's my opinion.
We're going to move on in the agenda. Our, our next item of business will be the goal-setting session facilitated by John Armheim. Amri from MCU Extension. They're going to need a minute to set up some stuff for that, so we're going to take a five-minute break and we'll come back. That sounds, around recess.
Well, we don't want to go on.
Yeah.
I mean.
We're all going down.
Okay, we're gonna get started in about one minute.
How you doing? You ready?
We will be getting up and moving around. This is a little more interactive meeting.
This is an eye test.
I'll take department heads for three hundred. I gotta stick with the agenda as approved. Back to order, please. This is Agenda Item 11. Goal Setting Session facilitated by John Armheim. Someday I'll get it. My last day at office, I'll get it, John.
MSU.
MSU Extended. John, you have the floor.
His wife uses her maiden name because she can't remember it either.
Just so the public knows, this will be a little bit different session. This is a goal-setting session, so you might not catch all the audio. We're probably gonna be getting up, moving around. So if you got a question about something going on, shoot us an email. We'll let you know.
Sonny, did you say my wife uses her maiden name? Actually, her maiden name is also German, and it's just as difficult for most people to spell and pronounce. So, yeah.
It's a small, brief piece of humor, you know?
And I have a son who he and his wife talked a little bit about hyphenating their names, and her name was Polish, and putting those two together would have been another. So they took a last name from one of her grandparents, I think it was, maiden name, and similar on our side, and they just shoved the two together, left a capitalized letter in the middle, and made a brand-new last name, and that worked pretty well for them. So, yeah. Strategic planning, as I've thought about the opening comments here this morning, it took me back to a discussion some colleagues and I have been having about how do we evaluate a program like this? Those of you who've attended our educational programs know we always have some kind of an evaluation form. We're always asking for what you've learned, and we're looking for, we're developing a way to come back and ask you later, not at the end of the program, but later, did this prove to be useful, and how was it useful? And in that conversation, I really had the same thought that I had getting ready today, and that is that strategic planning, when I say those two words, it's a little bit like saying dessert. And when I say dessert, Sonny, what comes into your mind?
Apple pie and ice cream. What else?
Apple pie and ice cream. Ron, how about you?
Cheesecake.
Cheesecake. Kyle?
I'm a cheesecake fan.
Oh, you're a cheesecake fan. Dean?
Apple pie.
Apple pie. Nobody said chocolate cake, but that's my point. When we say strategic planning, it encompasses this wide range of everything from community-wide, a lot of public involvement, long-term visioning kind of processes, down to some really specific, what are we gonna do in the next couple of weeks? Occasionally, we still use that same broad term. And so where we are today is a culmination, and I think you've seen this in at least one of the emails from Nate, you've got a 2017-18 strategic plan that, and I looked at that again, that the previous board put together, and those are some of those broader kind of visionary statements looking at the whole community. And what we have on the board here today, and you have a copy of it, is a combination of some specific items that have come out of previous discussions, requests of the board members over the last, I think it's a couple of months. What do you want to add to this? What are some of those more specific goals that we need to be working on to try and accomplish what's in that original plan? And so that's really what we're doing today, is working on prioritizing that set of goals. Also want to tell you a story about when I worked for Michigan Farm Bureau back in the late eighties and early nineties. We had a first-ever-for-our-staff, two-day conference. We got all of the staff together, and, you know, we had the big Post-it notes, and we were writing things on them and sticking them on the wall. We got to the end of those couple of days and left there, and staff were all just really pumped. There was all this great stuff, and we're gonna turn this organization upside down, and we're gonna get a lot of cool stuff done. We came back to staff conference a month later, and the executive director brought us one. And there was no secret in the room that he pretty much deflated everybody in the room. And he proceeded to explain that as an organization, we're gonna continue to do a membership program through the course of the year. We're gonna continue to do the promotion education program, and the Young Farmer Program, and several others like that, the policy development effort. And we really only had time and effort, energy amongst the staff to tackle one of those new things. And as I've done programs like this with other counties, I've found that same principle applies. You are still gonna do all of the things that the law requires the county clerk's office to do. You are still gonna do all of the things in the Register of Deeds Office, the Sheriff's Office, all of those other departments within county government, and you're not likely to make many wholesale changes there. And so at this point in the process, it's really appropriate, as you look at this list of goals, most of those focus in some kind of a role by your administrative team. And there's no way in the world. I think you've got absolutely one of the best administrative teams in the state that I'm familiar with. And I like to go to the conference with the Association of County Administrators on an annual basis. I had a chance in the last couple of weeks to spend a few hours in conversations with this team about how we were gonna do things today. You've got a top-notch group, no question about it. That said, they can't tackle all fifty-three of these and bring you the kind of information you need to make decisions on those in the next year and a half. It might feel a little short-term oriented. That's a constant struggle in county government with a two-year term versus, and what you hear from us in educational programs is, "Think long-term, think long-term, think long-term." Factor that into your discussion and your thoughts today about what's most important here as well. So after the discussion, we've got some sticky dots we're gonna pass out to the commissioners. We'll let you come up and do some voting. I took a little heat in a county a few years ago where we did something like that with commissioners and department heads, and the county clerk it was in that county came to me a couple of years later, and she said, "You know," the commissioners walked up there, about three of them, three or four of them, the commissioners walked up, and they just kind of stood back and watched where everybody else voted, and they stuck all their dots on the one that they wanted to get done. It was something that needed to get done, no question about it. So what we're gonna ask you to do today, we're giving each commissioner a different color, dots, and so that will hopefully prevent you from going up and going, "Oh, you know, mine are blue, and so I'm gonna stick." We really want you to choose, I think it's ten dots we have, ten dots for each of you. Choose the ten items that you think are the highest priority to work on over this next year and a half.
John, are these the items that we identified in the 2017 session that you have on the wall?
They come out of that, they come out of the requests and the responses that the administrative team got from you over the last few weeks as well, recent discussions of the board. And let me check just a second, Sonny. I think, I think I've really covered everything I wanted to talk about. Oh, one other. Before we start the discussion, twenty-five after ten. We're gonna need about ten minutes to vote at the end. I'm happy to stay here all afternoon if you all want to stay and keep talking. And I figured that would be the response. If we talk about all fifty-three, we're down to about a minute and thirty or forty seconds each, so just kind of keep that in mind as the discussion goes on.
I guess the point that I want to make is, when you're reading these bullet points up here, the 2017 strategic plan as it was drafted was never approved by the Board of Commissioners because we did not believe that it necessarily reflected what we actually discussed on that particular day. But staff provided the strategic plan that you have in your packet today. And at least from my perspective, and I don't know if Ron remembers, I truly don't believe that the 2017 plan that was actually drafted and published reflected the discussion that we actually, in fact, had that day. John was there, and, you know, I don't know if you have that comment or not, but that certainly was my opinion coming out of that discussion, and to the best of my knowledge, the Board of Commissioners did not adopt that plan.
What is up on that? The fifty-three goals are goals that we sent out in email in March, March 1st, I think the date was. We sent out a listing of goals that we have collectively talked about since the new board arrived in January, and the administrative team sent that to the commissioners and asked for input. Commissioners gave input, and we kind of condensed all of that to these fifty-three.
And I'm great with that. And I guess the point that I'm making, if you're reading the information in your packet, the 2013 strategic plan was a good document. The 2017 plan is not, at least in my perspective.
Floor's open for discussion. Any of the items on the list, you wanna make the case that they're important? That they're less than important? Didn't you each?
I think they're on the sheets. I think they're on the sheets that are in front of you.
These are the same items that are on that list. And of the fifty-three, I noticed at least one. The one about the dashboard, they're also grouped in some categories, and the one about the dashboard shows up in a couple of places. So whichever one you vote for, we'll make sure that we tally that together.
Does everybody have the list?
Are these tactic, are these strategic or tactical? Or are we supposed to be, I mean, there's certain things that are kind of nits, and other things that are much more comprehensive and much further-reaching. Are we supposed to be focusing on the big issues and items? Or anything we want, I guess?
Anything you want within this? I think there is a range within these, from some larger issues, broader issues, to some that are more specific. But at the end of the day, what we're really looking for is some guidance to the administrative team. Given that we know they can't tackle all of these at once, where do we start? And in most, as I read through them, pretty much all of them will require some work by the administrative team and perhaps other departments, other department heads, other staff throughout the county operation to bring back to you some recommendations, some options, you know, to put that in front of you for whatever decision you need to make as a board.
Is there any difference in this handout from what we were emailed?
No.
Okay. I don't need the paper.
That is correct. What you have today is what was emailed.
Let me take that paper from you.
Please.
So what our goal would be, John, correct me if I'm wrong, is we would like some direction here, and then the staff will come back with an action plan for the top prioritized goals. And we'll present that to the Board of Commissioners as an action plan going forward for staff, for the immediate future. You'll see that on this, one of these, one of these goals is a strategic planning session. If the board feels that that is an important thing to do, this is not that. This is something more tactical, as Mr. LePointe stated, something that's more objective for us to tackle.
Okay. So, from just from my perspective, as my fellow commissioners may remember, and John and Nate, back when we all first had a, like, early November, did the new commissioner training, this was something, the whole idea of us being able to get together and collectively discuss what, where are our shared priorities? Where do we have some common ground and are looking to move things forward and give staff direction, I think is incredibly important. So I'm really glad this is happening. That said, and no disrespect to administration, but I didn't have the opportunity to see any of my colleagues' priorities until yesterday. And there's a lot here and a lot to digest. Like, I knew what the things were that I submitted to you, Nate, by May, March 15th, but I didn't know what anybody else had submitted. And we have the challenge, and it's fine. The Open Meetings Act, where we're not really supposed to deliberate offline. And so really, these meetings are the opportunity that we have to consider one another's perspectives and put our heads together and figure out where we share interests. So I'm feeling a little bit, like, I'd like a chance to sit with this, and maybe we have a special meeting where it's more, we're not taking votes and telling staff what we're going to do right now so much as having time to digest. I need more than twenty-four hours to think through what my colleagues have put forward and really put some good thought into that. So I really like that we're doing this, and I'm also feeling pressured because we got this yesterday, and now we're expected to use dots and make votes and give direction today. And that, I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but I'm feeling a little bit like I'd like a little more opportunity to digest these and think them through, and maybe have some open conversations and hear what my colleagues' reasons are behind some of their suggestions before I commit to putting a dot on there for you, John. So that's, does that... So that's, does anyone else have any perspective on that?
Well, let's start that process at least.
Sure.
Read through them and.
I'd love to do that. I think discussion is great today and starting to begin, but it was, maybe I was panicking. We asked, like, commit, you all, right now.
You've got fifty-three now.
I need more than a twenty-four hours to, to consider these kinds of things.
Well, it's, I think the hope was that we could do that today. Certainly as we get to the end of the next hour and a half or so, if you as a group say, you know what, I, I really still need some more time to think these through and make some decisions, I'm perfectly happy to come back and, and work with you at a, a future date to, to, more discussion if that's what you want or, or actually do the voting at that point as well.
Just some question, a question going through. Under partners, the study, the possibility of partnering with YMCA to provide more services for the parks and recreation department, including programs for seniors. How, does anybody have an idea how that would, would actually look? I mean, is it, is, would it be having lesser staff of county employees in parks and rec and more turn it over to the YMCA for, so that there's more of a profit center for the county along with service providing? It's, I guess it's just a question I have.
I can give you my thoughts. This is something that's been mentioned over the years, but I, but the thought is, if we spend four hundred thousand dollars a year out of our general fund for parks, you look at what you spend, you look at the list of services, can someone provide all these services at a better value, either more services or less money than us running that department? It's something to look at. It's kind of a sweeping change, but.
And, and as it is right now, is, the Y is still, is take care of the pool.
Yes.
And they're taking care of that, there's an, an exercise facility in there and.
Ice rink.
Is, is that running better than what it was before?
But in, in addition to that, the Y is also operating the softball program at, at Civic Center and American Legion does baseball programs and those kind of things. You know, T-Bays handles the soccer program. You know, we, we have huge partnerships in recreation. What, what Grand Terrace County has historically done is we've been the landlord. We, we have the facilities, we make those facilities available, but we ask partners to actually in fact operate those. A few years ago, we, we tried a little pilot program, if you will, whereas we were going to operate the baseball program. There was pros and cons to it. It, it only lasted a short period of time and much of the reason it was changed on both sides was political. You know, it truly was. And I, I think either way that it went, it could have been probably better than it is today, but, you know, it, it got hung up in a bunch of other stuff that was going on, you know, and it was unfortunate. But, you know, we, we need to decide if, number one, what our priorities for our parks and recreation program are, you know, and that's what we have a Parks and Rec Commission for, you know, and, and somehow or another, maybe they need some guidance as to where we're going to go. You know, maybe we look at expanding partnerships, whether it be with the Y or whether it be with T-Bays or American Legion or whatever. You know, I think we all realize that we, we cannot be everything to everybody, but at the same time, we have thirteen parklands and they're all completely different from each other. You know, I, you know, there was a, thing came out, I think last week, about possibly doing a ride-along tour of, of parks facilities, but based on the timeframe that they have it in, there's no way you're going to, you're going to get much information other than low-speed drive-by. But, you know, there's, I think we all can, can look at parks and maybe, maybe we're at a point where part of our strategic planning in that regard is a joint meeting with the Parks Commission to try to envision, see if, if, what their vision is, you know, and, but remember that our Parks Commission, based on the way it is actually formed, they truly have the authority of how we operate our parks, the Board of Commissioners does not.
I have three, like, big things. Like, if we lose sight of these, I consider us a failure. And number one is our MERS pension debt and making sure that we're monitoring that situation and paying enough so that we aren't going backwards. My second thing is to look at our correctional facilities infrastructure. If, if, you know, as Sonny said, our jail needs to be replaced. I think we need to look at that and it's a huge dollar item potentially, after touring Wexford and seeing all of the, you know, like, man, if they just thought ahead, they could have saved so much time and money on these things. And they gave us a whole list that showed us every one of them. So I think, you know, I don't know when it, when it would be built or, you know, whatever we do with it, we need to stand on top of that. And the third thing is just our, our general finance, things like our, our fund balance policy, general finance policies, that if, if we manage those three things, that's what we should be focusing on in addition to these, but never lose sight of those three things. Those are my three.
One thing in regard to the fund balance policy, and Dean will have to refresh my memory, but back a number of years ago, we reduced the, the percentage of funding that was in our policy because of the fact the, the county simply didn't have the extra money. Was it twenty percent we reduced to fifteen, Dean?
You're currently at fifteen. I don't recall what it was before then. I think it was a range of eighteen to twenty percent of your general.
Twenty-two and then went to eighteen and after I left the board, it went down.
And I, just the quick comment right now, I mean, when we went to the summer tax collection, that had a big, played a big part in having a higher fund balance because you need that for your cash flow for the first six months in your general fund. So, but we'll talk more about that later.
At the different levels and what to, what to focus on, one of the items in here is better defining the roles of the Board of Commissioners and its interaction with county So, you know, my, my general philosophy on boards, and I think it's largely true of this body as well as when I was sitting on a nonprofit board, is to the extent possible we're providing some oversight, some guidance in general terms, hiring good people and then staying out of the way. And so, you know, like on the pension, I, I totally agree with, with my, my partners here. I'm glad that we've been aggressive on it and, and taken the opportunities when we have them to make additional payments, make sure we're on top of things. As I've run the numbers, I think, you know, we have, we do have a plan that isn't from us, it's from the board before us and we're trying to improve on it. And I know there's mistrust of MERS and what the, the appropriate estimate of investment returns and all of that sort of thing. I get it. But as with, if I'm buying a house, I'd rather have the cash and I paid for the house and I own, I'm in the house and I own it free and clear. That's not where we are. We have a mortgage and, and if I, if I want to pay off that mortgage as fast as possible, that's great, as long as I can still pay to keep the roof fixed, right? Otherwise, my house is going to fall apart because I'm cash poor, all because I wanted to make sure that I was paying off that mortgage as fast as absolutely possible. And so my concern with our overall outlook on the pensions, just to make sure that we keep it in perspective, yeah, it's a big deal, it's a large number, but it's a large number spread out of, over a long period of time. And we need to just stay on top of the plan and keep that as a, as an annual, quarterly even, but just, you know, stay on top of it, but not have us get so focused on that that we lose sight of the things that the county can do for its residents. So, yeah. So when I, when I put in my, my listings, you know, I, I kind of, I mentioned that down at the bottom as, yeah, I want to stay on top of that, but as far as the goals that I want to set now, we've kind of dealt with that in a, in a very serious way in the last couple of months. We've made, we can put in seven and a half million dollars this year. We're going to keep our commitment to MERS that we're paying five point nine, so we're ahead of them. And now I, I'm hoping to focus on more things like, you know, we got the fiber and broadband for the county and, you know, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I tend to agree and I agree with the chairman of the agency, there's a really important priority. And I also know that this board has already demonstrated with our votes, and have been unanimous or near unanimous on this topic in our first, what, four and a half months in office, that it is in fact a huge priority, that we have been aggressive about addressing it, we're taking it very seriously. And so I feel like that's a goal that's been set and is in motion. And that would be my only reason if I, when I have to commit and put a dot on there, that I might not choose that, because I feel like it's, it's a given. It's a foundational piece that this board has already laid and I would be curious whether my colleagues are in agreement with that sort of perspective that, yep, check, where it's, it's front of mind and we've taken action.
I totally agree. I would expect everyone to be slightly strategic when they place their.
Of course, but, but I just wouldn't want it to be perceived that, you know, that, oh, well, I don't think the pension's important because I'm not using my dot. No, I already used my dot by voting the way I have in conjunction with my colleagues, so I'd like to hear from.
I wasn't going to put adopter either.
Maybe if you, if you see it differently, because I would want to figure that in right before going forward. We've already set that as a goal and we're, we're making progress toward that goal. Is that fair? I don't need to call you all and ask you this privately, so I'm going to ask this publicly, like, is that a fair statement, that this current board has made it a goal and has taken action toward that goal collectively?
I think we've certainly improved the situation by going to the seven million, committing to that. And that's based again on a five and three-quarter percent return on investment. I, I, do I think that that, that number's going to hold? I'm guessing over time, between now and 2034, we may have to ratchet that up at some point in time, so I guess I'm more, I'm not as, I'm more optimistic certainly with the seven million versus the five point nine million. I think we're in a much better place, but if we have some reserves, I don't think we want to commit on certain projects. I think still keeping a little reserve would be a good thing, because as I said before, that's the one obligation we can't miss. That pension payment has got to be made. And, I mean, we can cut staff, we can cut services, those are all things we don't want to do, we could do. The one thing we can't do is fall short on our pitching pension commitment. And again, with only seventy-five people currently employed under that program, it's, it's locked in place. We don't have any options with increasing contributions of current employees or anything like that. So that still remains my, my priority. The second is, I think Rob had mentioned, is the jail. And the whole correctional, there's, there's a couple points in here as I'm looking back through this. They talk about a, create a correctional infrastructure committee that should study how to best improve county corrections. Corrections goes beyond just the physical jail. The one under, right underneath that is reevaluate our county, I've added the word, approach to mental health needs and services. Those two things go hand in glove. I think in talking to the, the people running the jail here and the people we talked to in Wexford, what you have in jail is a big mental health problem to a large, large degree. My concern, and I think that's, that's either one or two, concern I have is that the pressure to build, the pressure regarding a jail in 2014 was we have a capacity problem and that was driving it. We, we have to build a bigger, a bigger jail. Well, we don't have a capacity. And I think there was discussion at that time, I was mentioning to Nate a few minutes ago, of building a three-hundred-bed jail. That was kind of the thing. We're going to build, we need to build a three-hundred-bed jail because population's growing. If we had done that, that would have been the biggest white out, that would have made the Septage Plant look like a well-run planning project in my mind. So the focus to build that is not, in my mind, the capacity issue, it's the, it's, it's a number of other issues plus the operating cost. The cost is five and a half million bucks a year to operate that jail. I, I haven't, you know, none of us have looked at the numbers in detail, but I'm sure we could, with a different mindset, a different design, a different program, cut those costs dramatically. So I, I look at it as a win-win and I think a new facility, I don't even want to call it a jail anymore because there's some other options that we could look at, can pay for itself and provide better benefits not only to the people that are incarcerated, but to those of us that, once they get out of jail, they're hopefully in a better position than when they went into, into the system. So I've got the two big ones, I think what Rob had mentioned is, keep an eye on, still look for opportunities to find additional funding to pay down the pension liability, focus on corrections. And just overall, when I came into this, I was really focused on the budget. I think there are opportunities, probably in all departments, to, to improve efficiency and utilization. And kind of along that line, maybe if there's a fourth, my fourth would be, there was a big, it was a big issue a couple of years ago about the, the computer systems here, the software, et cetera, and there's a lot of accusations about it regarding the whole thing. Anyway, I've looked into it a bit and there's opportunities that we should be looking at strategically to move to a different, different platform. What we've got in place now is a, this I can identify as a potpourri of different software applications that are disjointed, not integrated. It has to cost inefficiencies where things are done multiple times because we don't have an integrated system. We have what they call a best-of-breed approach. Everybody buys their own little package, services their needs, but doesn't service the county as a whole. So that's something that's very strategic. It's going to take years to move to something more efficient and more cost-effective than what we have now. So those are probably my four and there's some other interesting things we should do, but I almost look at those as operational issues. That's my two cents on this.
I think one key piece is, as we discuss, you know, strategic planning, whatever, we have to make sure that what we're asking to do is truly doable. You know, it's, it's always easy to, you know, pick out that pie in the sky, we're going to do this, but it doesn't always work. You know, there, there's sometimes just simply isn't, isn't a means by which for us to get there, you know, and, you know, these are, these are certainly good points, you know, there's, we can pick out, you know, eight, ten, half a dozen of them, you know, but at the same time, it's going to, it's not something this board can do by ourselves. We, we simply have to have buy-in both by, by county employees and staff, but also by the community. Because, you know, we've, I've made the statement before, we as a, as a county government provide hundreds of services throughout this community. Every one of those services comes with a cost, but there's someone in our community that depends on that service. So, you know, it's always, trying to figure out what the, what the return on investment is on some of those programs is nearly impossible. You know, and, you know, we, we all know how much I bitch about community mental health, but, but, but the bottom line is they provide a lot of services in our community and we truly, we truly do not pay even a small fraction of their budget. But, you know, it's, it's still a big piece of our budget. So, you know, that's why, you know, I'm as critical of it as I am, but. So, you know, that's why, you know, I'm as critical of it as I am, but along with the fact, I still believe they belong, they owe it to us in the jail. That's always been a sore subject, and it will continue to be.
Where do we go from here? Just, well, I was going to mention, the new commissioners are unaware of this, I'm sure, but Nate, you can tell me if I'm misspeaking here, but regarding the audit of the county facilities and buildings, Marty Dunham had that completed in 2018, I believe, partially.
Partially done, yeah.
A good share of that was done.
I think Joe's got most of it finished up and done a pretty good job of it, from what I think.
And with, yeah, with Joe being on board, Marty got it, you know, got some stuff started. I just do want to let people know, because Joe's not here patting himself on the back for getting stuff done, because he's just doing his job, but they are staying, the audit has been done on a lot of stuff, a lot of the buildings, a lot of repairs and upkeep and maintenance needs to be done, I'm sure, but.
Joe's, do you have that?
We do have that. There is a extensive audit of the facilities that led to a capital improvement plan funding that Joe has been, over the last, since he's been here, been ticking those items off of that list. It was extensive, I think there's three or four binders of information in my office indicating what that audit revealed.
How many PDFs is that?
A lot.
Can I maybe though, just, maybe what you should consider though, is expanding beyond just what are the physical needs, but usage. So for example, you go to the third floor, there's no more planning department, there's no more solar erosion department. You go down the basement of this building, it's mostly empty. You know, are we best utilizing the spaces that we have? I know Parks and Recreation, they're going to be looking at, trying to come up with ways to improve the civic center. Is facilities the best place to be housed at the civic center? Or could it be moved out to Lefraniere campus? So, you know, energy and repairs and maintenance, those are all very important, but, you know, maybe you should look at a bigger picture and say, the basement in this building, what is it being used for, and what should it be used for?
We had significant discussion over the last year and a half about a daycare versus other uses in the basement. We still don't have any very succinct direction with that. So we have had a couple of proposals, we've had inquiries about different uses in the basement. We just want to know ultimately, what does this board want us to do with the facilities? We have some vacant parcels of property, you know, what do we do with that? We had a recent inquiry, again, about the Birmley property on adjacent to T-Bays. I know that's a Parks and Rec's property right now. Overall, what do you see as a use for all of these properties in the space?
Well, I think, I think we have to try, as part of this process, we have to identify not only what is our, what is our best use of the property, but what's best use of our facilities, you know? And we, I think we all know that there's a sizable amount of square footage in this facility, what we're sitting in right today, that is not, is either not being used or is being underutilized. So maybe we should be talking about how to do something with that. You know, we've talked about, you know, where we're at with, you know, the district court building isn't too bad with the space they have, but the historic courthouse has a lot of issues with space. You know, I do, you know, most, some of us will remember when we moved the front of the court's office into this building, that was kind of an ugly opportunity, but it was, you know, but at the same time, you know, are we best utilizing the facilities that we have? Or is there better to do with them? Or is there the opportunity to rent some of them?
When I look, when I think about things like use of space, end to end, I know, Mr. Alger, you and I have had some preliminary conversations about the proposal for, or discussion deliberation on whether to provide onsite childcare. I look under, I guess it's the second page, where it's, makes Grand Terrence County the leading entity, and the last bullet point on the page is strive to be an employer of choice. I mean, childcare is incredibly challenging issue for families in this region, and there's a huge amount of pressure, right, because we have a dwindling number of providers. I feel like the Hunger Games, trying to get your kid on the list, right? And so, you know, to me, thanks for getting that reference out.
Took me a second.
So to me, that is worth at least us considering. I feel like perhaps bringing the materials and the survey that was done of staff, there were some other things that happened in the past, where it asked us to at least consider whether an onsite childcare facility was a good use of space, providing for the families, and not only would that provide a service for families who, you know, one of the parents who wasn't employed by the county, but it would also alleviate some pressure on other childcare facilities, freeing up some of those hungering lottery spaces that families are really desperately trying to access. And I know that, I've talked to plenty of families where one of the spouses might end up having to stay home, because they do the math, and the expense of childcare, it doesn't make sense for them to go to work, you know, they're going to spend that money all just on paying for their child to be in a place while they're at work, so, and that has impact on your earning power over time, it has all kinds of dynamics. So just some, I guess, thoughts around use of space and connecting it to being an employer of choice. I don't know if that's something that the county employees as a whole would find to be beneficial. It would be good for us to take a look into that more. So that's one point about use of space that has already been discussed. There is a document out there, there's been research done, and it would probably be advantageous for this to work. At least take a look and see if we think that's a discussion we should forward. And it has been shared by some of the members of our community. I would actually be really curious, Mr. Alger, maybe you can speak to this on the final page, someone suggested, basically, talking to the taxpayers, what are some of their priorities for how we are managing their money?
In terms of?
And services that are provided by the county, so it's conduct countywide services to establish priorities at the third bullet point down. Does that happen regularly? You know?
It doesn't.
How it's worded and who writes it would be probably political.
It doesn't happen very frequently, and I think they have done it once since I've been here, 26 years been here. So this is something that I would find value in, if it's done appropriately and correctly to focus the discussion. You can't just say, hey, everybody, tell us, here's 90-some thousand people out there, give us 90,000 points. I think that we should prioritize our services, give them, give the public the ability to comment, whether it's on an online survey or other means. Thought maybe, it may be a good time to do it, as we are beginning to look at the census, and we're going to be having large amounts of public contact anyway. It would be beneficial to know, where do you, where does the public see law enforcement? Where does the public see the Health Department? Where does the public see the Court Services, the Commission on Aging?
Parks.
Parks, the various services that we provide. It would be beneficial to see a ranking of interest. I get the complexity there?
Being on a township, we had to do that, do these surveys, and you'd ask, the thing would go out there, and every wants everything. Then you'd ask the question.
Are you willing to pay?
You're willing to pay higher taxes. And, you know, we did this every year, and you get the same results, they all wanted everything in the parks and bike trails and you name it, they wanted it, and, but paying for it. So you have to be a little careful. I would think that just us talking, I mean, we all knocked on doors not that long ago. If you didn't get a, I certainly got a vibe from people I talked to.
From my district, but not necessarily the whole county.
Okay, well, I'll push issues that are important to my district, you push, and then we'll, then that's the way it works. So if you, those things are time-consuming, you probably have to bring a consultant in or someone to put these things together, doing the mailings, just based upon what I've seen as the results of these things, I think long are about. One thing that I had added.
Can I just ask a question about, before you pivot? So I was just wondering, Mr. Emmerich, if you could speak to, in your work with county governments, if there are examples we could look to, other counties that have designed, you know, basically getting your taxpayers input on ranking and priority? Appreciating Mr. LeBoix's point, but are there best practices out there that we could look at and potentially adapt for our own purposes if we were in collective agreement, if that was even a thing we wanted to do?
Off the top of my head, I don't have an answer for you.
Okay. Is that something you'd be willing to look into?
I do have some colleagues around the state who I can talk to and get some of their thoughts on that one.
And one other point, Mr. Gordy, just, it's funny that you mentioned at the township, because I've read one of your most, well, more recent surveys of your constituents, and I did see a lot of what you said, but one thing that really stood out to me was that the one key area where people said, yes, I'd be willing to pay more taxes, was roads. It was just interesting to me that that sort of rose, and that was something that interested me, that that was enough of a priority for the constituents.
If you make it bad enough.
Well.
And they did, and they voted for it, but.
Yes, exactly. So that told the municipality something about whether it would even potentially go through to put something forward, a mill or what have you. I see your point, and also I see the other side.
One item that I added was, and I've talked about several times, performance appraisals, and I didn't see it make the.
It's in there.
Is it in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably in the approved accountability focus area.
Somewhere in here.
Implement supervisor training on documentation and employee performance reviews.
Oh, here it is, right in the middle. Implement supervisor.
Okay, well, just a simple thing, doesn't, isn't going to take a whole lot of effort of this staff, who's HR is, is a simple thing, is ask HR, give them direction that to put a program in place where they'll do annual performance appraisals is.
This is a topic we've talked about at managers' meetings. The issue is that, yep, it is a simple process and something I'm very familiar with, we've done it a lot. The issue is that we have elected officials, and they may not see eye to eye with, A, the necessity of having a performance appraisal, the validity of it, the value of it, and we can't make them do it. So we have to kind of work through that. It is something we've been working with HR on now for several months, trying to figure out, is there a general cookie cutter template that we could use that everybody would buy into?
Well, I think we also, as part of that same thing, we need to seriously look at updating our job descriptions, because, you know, our job descriptions, our payroll system, you know, the way we, you know, the whole class, employee classification plan, I'm not sure it fits anymore, you know, because the job that, you know, a clerical assistant in Bonnie's office is doing today is not the same as what she, they were doing 15 years ago, when the thing was written the last time.
Our HR director was given that task to update the job descriptions, make sure they were current, and she did that. There were some changes. The classification plan is a whole different story.
Yeah, it's a, the classification plan is very, very complex and very complicated.
Roll the topic, oh, you're done? Okay, go ahead. I'm just afraid that, well, perhaps I'll be here for two years, minus four months or whatever.
You mean two years.
And I'll raise the question about, are we going to implement performance appraisals or not? And realizing that if someone refuses, you know, that, no, I don't want to give my people a performance, annual performance appraisal. I would find that very concerning, but if they have the option, they have the option. But we have enough staff under your domain that aren't elected of, that, I just.
Curious how many counties do that?
Yeah, what, yeah, other counties, do they? I mean.
The ones I talked to have not.
I, yeah, I haven't asked.
My experience is it's a mix. There's a solid mixture of those that do it and those that don't.
That do performance.
And there are departments that are left out of it. There are very few communities where the courts would be involved, because they would simply elect not to be involved.
Well, unless you ask them and give them, here's something we'd like to do, and here are the benefits, because employees kind of like the opportunity to know where they stand and get it documented. It's the managers that usually are opposed to doing it, but.
I do know a place to ask that question, and I just made a note to make sure I do. The Michigan Association of County Administrative Officers has an annual conference at Crystal Mountain coming up in about.
Next week.
Next week. Starts on Wednesday, yeah. And one of the features of that conference on Friday is what they call a nuts and bolts session, and they literally sit around the table, one of them organizes it, collects questions from the rest, and they toss those questions out to the group and get responses from each other, and I will throw that question in the mix and let you know what I hear. Bryce looked like he's been trying to jump in for a little while. Brad's leaning into the mic, let's go with those two guys next.
Go ahead, you had your hand up first, but I thought Brad was falling asleep.
No, so.
Taking it all in, that's good. So since my dessert would be crunch berries, like a little bullet, so, and so I'm in a different place, trying to figure out like what, strategic planning and what it means. Like, I'm trying to deal with the level of specificity that you guys want from our goal setting. I mean, if we're talking about use of space, and then we're getting down as granular as talking about having childcare facility versus just as the board say, hey, look, we're cognizant of the fact that there's some unused space, and we would ask you guys to go sketch out a handful of plans, you know, and then bring them back to us, and we'll, is that a good level of goals?
Yep, so with that one specific item.
Yeah.
Do an audit of available space, or whatever the statement is. We would do that and come back to you with a work plan that says, this is what we're going to do. We're going to audit, we're going to seek proposals for use, or ask for proposals for use, and bring it back to the board. If that is not something that you desire us to do, we don't want to do it.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
If there's, so that's that example.
Right.
And we could go all the way through 53 goals of that and say, okay, if you don't want us to do this.
Right.
You don't want us to spend time and energy.
Right. Which is your option.
Yes.
Totally. And so like another one, the general category is about enhancing the public experience, and so talking about improving the website, dashboards, all of which, I mean, all of those are good things, and I guess it would be a priority of me, of mine, to have the county, the counties face to the public to be as informative and as inviting as possible. And that would kind of be the end of my guidance, you know, so even there, I mean, which may mean you guys then say, well, you know what we need? Our website has these laws, or we can each bring up, there's a problem with the website here, a problem with the website here, and, so again, I mean, so I totally take your point on the issue about the space, and I guess that just applied to some other broader categories. I'm about public engagement, use of space, and then the one that I worry about, and I still haven't figured out, I'm teasing some ideas on tools, but as far as housing for our residents who are on the lower end of the pay scale, that's a thing that I'd really like us to work on, but I think at the county level, the tools aren't necessarily cleanly developed to know exactly, what are we going to do about it? But that's something that's a.
After Brad goes over that.
Yeah, all right, and now I'll shut up.
Okay. Well, I mean, listening to everybody here and kind of absorbing things, one, you know, like Gordy said, we knocked on doors, it wasn't too long ago and everything, and we heard from our constituents what they wanted, and each district, I mean, it could very well be different things. One thing I heard was MERS and being fiscally responsible. I feel being fiscally responsible would take a number of these off the list to begin with, because they would just fall into place with the fiscally responsibility. But, you know, I think, I think as we get ready to vote, I mean, obviously, there's seven of us, and if we get 10 dots, there could be 70 different things, even though there's only 50. there's only 53 there, but, you know, so that don't, may not narrow it down very much. But once we do narrow this down, take the utilization of space and childcare, well, then that's a whole nother topic in itself. It brings up many issues. Who's going to pay for, who's going to pay for renovations? You know, is it a benefit to employees or do they pay for the childcare? You know, so I, I think, you know, we can talk about each, each of these 53 items on here, but that's all it's going to be is just talk until we actually narrow it down. You know, I, I think we'd utilize our time better by narrowing it down and then wiping some of these off the list completely and move forward that way. Otherwise, I mean, we could talk about this all day today, tomorrow and Friday also, and still be no farther ahead, you know?
And I think in the conversation, I'm getting a little bit of a sense, not that I could go up here and pick them out and go, oh, they're going to choose this one and this one and that one and that one, but it, it gives a little bit of a sense of where folks' priorities are in having some conversation. And, and what I heard pretty clearly from the administrative team is that that sense of direction, and we'll use the childcare as an example, if, and I, is that specifically up here?
No, I, I called it out under the strategy of the employer of choice after, and, and it's linked to the facilities usage too, so I agree with that.
Okay, so we need to keep that in mind. Let's just say that one comes out as a high priority, then I, I see staff doing some of that research to come back with some of the, you know, into the, some of the details that you talked about, Brad, here's what we've learned, how far do you want us to continue to pursue this, what kind of additional direction do you want to give us? And over time, they will provide the information that you folks need to actually make a decision, are we going to do this or not?
They're not talking about, just about childcare, but more like facility usage thing. Go and, and help us figure out, collect information on what potential uses, highest and best uses, services to the community, services to the, and bring that back to us so that we can then chew and digest, but they need that direction in order to do that.
Where, where to spend the energy bringing you the information? In which.
Right, and that's, that's what I was saying, if we can narrow it down, and if facility usage is number one, whether it be childcare or central dispatch expanding or whatever the case may be, at least then we could, we could focus our thoughts and discussion on that, you know, and, and like I said, I mean, the utilization of space is going to actually bring more questions than we can answer right now because we don't, I mean, we don't even know the known right now, so.
I'm inclined to think that in that this is, this is more of a goal-setting session than it is, you know, for more of a short-term thing, at least in my mind.
Yep.
You know, I'd like to take those, those 10 dots and not give each commissioner more than five, because I think the only way to truly identify, identify where our priorities is not give us so damn many choices.
Let me.
Kind of like paint.
Let me give you a little bit of my philosophy on that one, and I'm open to however many you want to use.
I stock 150 colors to have people powder coat their lawn furniture. I know about choices.
Typically, typically when I do this, I have a little formula that I use, and I look at, we'll just use 50 for a nice round number, and I look at 50 and I go, what I would like to see at the end of this is the top one have 50 dots and the bottom one have none. To accomplish that, I've got to have an average of 25 dots times 50 items divided by seven of you. And I did the math a week or two ago when we were talking, and it was huge. It was like I was going to have to give seven of you about 30 dots apiece. So I feel like we've already moved in that direction, Sonny, with 10 dots each, and the similarities I'm hearing in the group, I think we're going to see these grouped together pretty much, and a lot of these are just going to not get any dots at all. But if, if you folks say, you know, let's just focus it even more and let's go with five or six or whatever, we're open to that.
Larry Yenman always followed me around wanting part of my dots, you know?
Well, yeah.
Well, I think too on here, there's some things that we can possibly have an impact on, some things we can't, you know, the affordable housing, everybody wants affordable housing, you know, but really what, what can we do to make housing affordable? I mean, there's a supply and demand issue, you know, and until we can fix that supply, you know, housing's not going to be as affordable as what people want.
I want my.
Go ahead with Betsy on that one, and then we'll come back to Rob.
We have limited, absolutely unequivocally the case with county government and the way it's structured, absolutely. However, if you look at under service recipients, and it's the one, two, three, four, fifth one down, study workforce housing needs in the county and develop the strategy to address such needs, and then under partners, lead the discussion, the third floor, quit, lead the discussion with, you know, partners on issues like affordable housing, et cetera. Okay, so first thing, we have a study. It was a multi-governmental study. I participated as a citizen. I think it was 2015, so it's aging rapidly, right? But it was, it was Garfield, Long Lake, East Bay, the city, representatives from the county. That's on the website. There were recommendations, our planning department and our planners, who we no longer have, were instrumental in helping lead, I thought, a really helpful discussion and narrowing down what we can do. And there are things like the land bank. There are counties in this state and around the country that are, have some tools to address the issue of affordable housing using the land bank as a vehicle, and that's something that we could look at. So limited, yes, but that doesn't mean there's nothing we can do. When I was out knocking doors, both in my district and I, for other reasons, have knocked countywide, huge issue over and over and over, and visibly, you know, substandard housing. It's a huge issue in our county and affects our homeless population, it ties into all sorts of other things. So I, I, as you may have gathered, I'm a little bit passionate about this one in particular, and I also have done a fair bit of research on what is out there and what counties are doing to be the partner that we can be. The other thing we can do is be a convener, because we are the entity, the county, that sort of overlays all of our townships, our villages, our cities, everything, and this is an issue that impacts everybody. And we can, if we see ourselves as leaders and conveners and visionary, we could really act to help bring people together, facilitate conversations, and we may not pass the resolution or ordinance, but if we see ourselves that way and we have a plan, we can be more proactive about it. So that's Betsy Sofox on affordable housing. And I will just share, personally, I was a working student, working three jobs, putting myself through college, and I got picked pillar to post all over this county for years, renting, you'd have a roommate set up, and then the roommate would get another job and move away, your landlord would decide to sell out from under you. It is a real stress constraint on people of all ages, from all different walks of life, and that was why I came and participated. Andy, you and I, we're unmet, citizen, Andy and I don't agree on everything, but we very much agree that this was an issue that we needed to address. We came to those meetings, gave our input, and a lot focused in. The study's there, I think we should look at it. I would love to see staff take a look at that and, and maybe we can look at the land as a tool. Yeah, those are some things I think.
On to Rob.
So on, on that, no, I agree, there's an issue, there's, there's a demand, and I'd probably take a little different approach as, perhaps more conservative than the average person, but.
Andy and I are very different politically, but we agree on it.
My, my take is that government needs to get out of the way when it can. And, you know, a couple of months ago, I got a call from someone that's trying to put together a daycare center, and they were looking at another, like another, up to another month with building codes.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's an example of, could we, as a county, put a priority on things like that that are a need?
Removing rent, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could we make them a priority for the department? I don't, I don't know if that's an option, but could we, for something like that, like if we know there's a need for daycare, could we lower or reduce licensing costs to encourage people to go that direction?
Does the county license? I don't know.
Well, the building costs.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, you're going to have inspectors, you're going to have permits and licensing. I don't mean an actual daycare license.
Just taking a look at how can we reduce the burden of getting there.
And with the housing, housing is, is an inventory and demand issue, supply and demand, and sometimes there's a spike in demand, and we have, we have long winters here. Builders can only build so fast. We have a short timeframe. What can we do in the licensing office to clear the red tape? Because right now, I mean, you're looking at weeks, once you start, start the paperwork, you're looking at weeks for, you know, your inspection process. So what can we do to streamline that? I understand last year's board invested in some software that's not been implemented yet, but that's one way we're addressing that, but, you know, could we bring together our coding offices so that they don't have to, I mean, right now, if you want to get an address, you, you'd come to equalization, and inside that is our GIS department that gives out addresses. But, and you have to have that to get a building permit. Most people probably don't even know that unless they're building all the time.
Right.
So, and then, you know, you got to go to the county road commission to get your driveway permit, and if it's winter and you get a driveway permit for a paved one, well, you got to go back and get a unpaved one permit because it's, it has to be finalized to get your occupancy permit. So you go back and you get your gravel driveway permit, and in the spring, you go back and get a paved driveway permit so you can go back and pave it, you know? Then you got to go deal with your township, which is a whole nother silo to deal with.
So maybe it's a suite of tools.
Yeah.
Under that, under that general priority.
My utopia is a multi-district additional coding, licensing office. I, you know, it's a huge thing to consider in Michigan where we have townships separate, we have road commissions separate. Other states don't do all that, so being here, it's, it's an extra level of challenge. But I did talk to the local home builders association and ask them about the housing needs, and this is one of the things that, yes, we definitely have challenges dealing with the lead time on permitting. So what can we do? So I'd like to take a look at that, and that's, that's one that I submitted, was the streamline permitting for development, construction, and all permits.
But that's across the board. Thanks for pointing that out. I was sure I had seen it someplace, but I couldn't find it. Somebody else just.
I'll just, Gordy. Housing, I've made this comment, in my mind, the county, the ability to move the needle by the county is minimal. On what we can do, it's an important issue. I think we should be supportive of it, but to direct our limited staff to spend a lot of time focusing on that area, trying to get with the different entities, I think, I think we can spend our time and be more productive in other areas. It's, it's the townships. I mean, I talked about daycare centers in East Bay. I sat in a meeting when they wanted, when they wanted to build a daycare center and their ordinances wouldn't permit it because it was too close to something else and it was just a morass of, of issues that was permitting this daycare center to be built. So that's, those are townships. And the other thing is low-cost housing, go up to the peninsula and have a developer buy a piece of land and talk about putting some low-cost housing in. You will, you will have a big turnout at the next township meeting. So it's, it's much more in the, those jurisdictions, the city, the townships, the villages, to promote it or discourage it. And they can do it, they can, they can promote it if they want through their ordinances zoning, or they can discourage it through their ordinances in zoning. So I, I agree, it's, it's a big issue, but we, I don't really think we, as the county, what we have our ability to do, have much ability to move the, move the dial. So if they can, in the, in their time, work on that or support it, or someone comes to them and wants the county to participate, fine, but I don't know if we can take the lead.
And just to be clear, I was actually referencing using a study, an intergovernmental study that's already been done, but we have with recommendations. So I'm not saying send Nate and Chris and whoever off on.
Okay.
Months-long work. It's more like, can we look at that and see what is there, what the recommendations were, and if there are, there's the county can do it.
Okay.
So I'm definitely not suggesting we start from square one, I'm not that whole idea. Study about a study about a study.
I'd like to share a couple of quick observations on that one. I read a number of magazines that relate to stuff I want to do in my own house, and one of the things that keeps coming up are code requirements. One of those, and, and these are, this is an example of the kind of thing that we don't have control over at the county level. On the one hand, you go, oh, yeah, sprinklers in houses, that's a great idea. How many lives will that save across the country? And then you back up and go, $10,000 added to the price of the house, how many people are no longer going to be able to afford the mortgage to be able to buy the house, and how much can we keep stacking that stuff on? So that's one of those that we can't control.
And it only works if you can connect it to a city water system.
And you got to have a rock-solid water system, yep. On the other end of the spectrum, back to what we can do locally, I was one of a handful of rabble-rousers back in the mid-'90s. I live in Manistee County, and I was on a master plan review committee for the county. And we were like, why is there a minimum square footage requirement for a house? Why can't we do like my ancestors did and build a smaller house to begin with and add on to it over time? We actually made that change in the master plan. My own township, I learned a year ago, yeah, maybe it's been two years ago now, finally implemented that change in the township zoning ordinance. So some of those are long-term and they're, and they're small pieces of the puzzle, but we can do what we can do and we can't get too worried about the ones we can't.
Township promoter.
Ron.
Just a, another issue or item regarding the audit of county facilities, and we're talking about daycare in the basement. I would think it would be maybe as simple as letting it out, letting it be known that there's space available for lease in the lower level of the county building for somebody to put a daycare in there. And we've got office space on the third floor that, you know, maybe, maybe a couple firms would want to be in there, you know, small attorneys' firms, engineering firms, who, you know, someone starting out, you know? Those could be viable spots.
The whole third floor we could rent out.
There's, there's.
Can I?
I can work from home.
Hang on.
But there's the plan, there's the planning department, and there's the old soil rush into the.
Well, can I, and on that, on that point, I would, I would actually encourage you to go even broader and look at Lafranier. You have vacant property, maybe it's the site of a future jail, maybe not. You have facilities at the civic center. You know, could that be a spot for a daycare? Could you have new facilities at what is now an underutilized, empty animal control shelter? Do an RFP, maybe even broader, touching on all, all county, county properties, you know, I, one thing, we're all, we're spread out. We're got MSU extension and COA on Front Street, and you have this really complicated arrangement with the city where you're supposed to do a land swap, and nobody seems to be following it. You know, I would encourage you to, to look at not just, say, the basement or one facility or.
Right.
I would concur, encourage you to look at everyone and see where, where are their opportunities to maybe provide a service, but maybe also raise revenue.
We have, we have a dormitory at Twin Lakes.
Right, right.
I mean, I would be very interested if my colleagues agree and if you want to send anyone on it without pretty strong consensus, but of just that sort of, give us a picture of what facilities are underutilized, available, et cetera, right? And, and potential uses for those. I don't know quite how that would work. The RFP piece feels a little premature, like we, is that typical for using government-owned facilities, renting them out to private sector? I don't know.
Well, I, I would, I mean, not, not to argue with you, but I, I don't think we should be thinking, hey, is that typical of government, but is that the best, highest use that we could serve the public and maybe also turn it into a revenue maker where it's self-sufficient, where revenue is brought into the county? You know, I, again, I'm not, not trying to argue with you, I'm just saying, just because it's never been done.
Oh, sure.
By government before, you know, that shouldn't, that really should not be part of the equation in my mind. The way I look at it, can we provide a service? Can we address a need? And are we utilizing the best space that maybe we could bring in revenue as well to offset the cost of improving facilities?
Right, I mean, I understand the concept, it was just a question.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we were handed out, or yesterday, Nate, you sent us the 2013 master plan, and which is still the standing master plan. As far as I know, I mean, that's.
Nothing updated yet.
Right. Well, and I went through it last night and I went through it when I was on the planning commission. And I never caught this here, part of it, but on page 10, they referred, there's a chart there of existing land use. And commercial land at that time in 2010 was 3,400 acres. And it said recreational land is 3,000 acres. You know, there, there's 65,000 acres of pri, of public land. It, I guess it's just a example of our planning commission that was working for us back then. And it's, you know, they do have forest listed, but as 134,000 acres. But forest doesn't, doesn't give you the indication that it's recreational. And if we're trying to entice people to move here for recreation, we could let people, you know, let them know that there is plenty of areas to hike and bike and that they're not limited to, yeah, the 3,000 acres.
Yeah.
But it's.
I got my 10 dots ready.
I just, I just wanted to make that point because it's, there's things that have to be changed. And we do want to entice people to the county, but that doesn't make anybody feel like there's a, many places to recreate. Other than lakes, plenty of lakes.
Or is there some place in this whole list to, maybe it's an issue of updating the master plan, but maybe it's an issue of doing more to promote some of what's in the master plan?
Both the website topic of getting the work out.
Right, yeah.
Built, built on the website. And there was something elsewhere about communicating more about what, what, what we have available.
Right.
Right? So it built into several places like in this document that reflects what you just read from the, from the master plan.
Well, we may be thinking the same thing. Does it make sense that this point, because Commissioner Jewitt's right, that we can talk forever. But maybe it makes sense to narrow things down. But with, with, if I may throw in one caveat, is that because this is all new, right? I mean, because we got them last night and they're, and they're all valuable. And I, like, I'm, I'm in that place that I seem to be in a lot of wrestling with, we, we're going to go ahead and put on our dots. But I don't necessarily want that to be the end of the discussion, right? And so, so, because we, because there's more in here for me to digest and I want it to be a conversation that we can.
Let's meet here twice a month.
Yeah, all right.
My, my guess is you're gonna, you're gonna come up with a top third, a middle third and a bottom third. That's what, that's the way it generally works.
Yep. I think that's real likely today. And, and that, in that top third, we'll probably have some level of distribution that will give staff some direction about where to start. And, and honestly, two months, three months from now, if, if in some of your conversation, you start looking and you see one that was down in the middle third someplace and you go, you know, maybe that was a little more important than we gave a credit for. There's nothing says that you can't come back at that point and say, hey, staff, this is one that we need to, to bring a little higher up the list. But you've still given them that direction to get started.
Well, we have and we've already sent them off of it. When I've done this sort of thing in the past, I have, I have experienced this a little more retreat. Not that it's not open to the public, but not just at the end of, of a, of a regular meeting and sort of more expansive, you know, a couple hours to really. I, I don't want to dismiss other people's ideas until I've had a chance, maybe not at all, but until I've had a chance to ask. Well, you know, tell me more about why you think that. And, and we're doing some of that right now, but, but in a pretty limited timeframe. I also know we have people waiting to give public comments. So I still feel time pressure, not enough opportunity to really digest and even come up with questions that I might ask out to the board. Hopefully when we maybe have round two of this versus slam bam, 90 minutes, commit, send the staff off and off we go. That just feels a little too rushed to me still.
Gordy? I feel ready. I've got by 10 identified. I've been looking at them and it's, I'm ready to put them, throw them down there.
So the original intention, it takes four of you to give staff direction in an official capacity, right? So the, the idea is what have, what on these, of these 53 goals are important to you? So the, the discussion will come later, but if we can have some direction, so we can go through this list and say, one person or nobody wants to have scooters, we're gonna dump that off the list.
Is that actually?
So.
Chris put it on.
Because these things, these things have been talked about either individually with you or collectively with you. And we talk about these things a lot and a whole bunch more, by the way. That, that these kinds of things fit into, but we need general guidance from at least four of you as to what direction we want to go.
And so let me ask you this, Nate. What, if we all do our dots and you see some additional patterns emerge, which is the expected outcome, what happens next? Can you just walk me through? Am I, that's it? That was my chance and I don't get to ask any more questions?
No, that, that is not it. We would come up with a work plan. Number one, we would encapsulate what that vote, if you would call it a vote or prioritization, looks like. We would come back with a, some sort of a chart or demographic that shows exactly that. And then we'd sit back and say, what are our action steps to get you where you want to be and focus on the goals that you've identified as a priority? To Mr. Wheelax's point, probably a third, a third and a third.
Well, the other piece is, is very important and the timing that we have right now is that we're going to start within the next couple of months developing the 2020 budget. So if we can identify the top four or five items that we, we as a group identify as priority, then as they start to develop a 2020 budget, they can also acknowledge that nothing's free. So we're gonna have to find a way to, to fund those odds. And, and you know, because I would assume that the 2020 budget would go to departments in June?
It, it will, if not.
You know, so, you know, when we're, we're in May right now.
Yep.
To that point, you know, the developing a new website, we haven't, we have a website. We're under contract. It's supposed to be redesigned. There's going to be a cost to that. And we know what that looks like. We've had conversations with individuals and collectives about what that website should do. We just have to get the cost to it.
And I'm guessing if that comes up high on the list, they will for sure get that done.
We're gonna move it forward.
If that one gets no dots, your, your, the budget proposal might look a little different.
Well, but what we would need on that, for example, if it came out and said, we need a new website, and everyone says, you know, I would hope you'd come back and say, hey, the cost is $200,000. We may want to rethink, rethink that, so.
That is exactly what we would do.
Okay.
We just wouldn't.
So this gives you an idea and then you come back to us and.
John, we've got just over 20 minutes left before we adjourn. And I, we'll, we'll follow your lead. I just, I think some of us reserve the right to move our dots later on.
I, I think I'm hearing for the most part, the group is ready to do the voting. And if you change your minds later, then you change your minds later. Is that, am I hearing that pretty clearly?
I'm sure I'll change my mind.
So how many dots are we doing?
Ten.
If you're like most of us.
How many dots?
How many dots do you want?
How many do you want?
I want 10.
The whole 10?
Just follow your lead, John.
I kind of like the 10. Let's do the 10.
How many wants less? Shoot the lock off.
Can't be ripping them in two.
The thing about it is you're trying to, you're trying to identify what your priorities are. And the more opportunities you have to say, this is a priority, but I can't tell whether, when you put up 10 dots, I can't tell whether that's your first priority or if it's your number 10 item. That's, that's why I, I think that fewer dots is good, but it's okay. We generally try to do it. Make sure we got all different colors.
Your boss knew.
That's right. We budgeted the whole list. I usually have trouble with the seams on the.
So if you would, come on up and, these are all laminated. Stick your dots right on there. And that'll enable us to count them up and.
And John, we're clustering them. We can use more than one on one spot, please?
No, 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 no. No more than one vote per item, please. I've gotten in trouble on a couple of occasions in the past where I said, oh, if you want to put a second one, just one dot. We want to see your 10 most important ones. And because you all have different colored dots, we can figure out who voted too many in one place.
Well, no one you put two, two votes on one item.
All right. He's like, I'm seeing.
Nope.
You got the camouflage ones.
He's got the lighter green.
Camouflage dots. Didn't make the list this year.
We didn't get that specific.
It's creative.
I've always said, why do I buy a license for my, for my daughter?
Yeah, whichever one.
It's kind of like that whole Ray Bies thing. There hasn't been a gullible related Ray Bies case in the state of Michigan. It's like 1942.
Really?
But, but yet it's still a priority.
Yeah, we have a hard time letting go.
I thought two, two people asked me. Yeah, did you not see the news?
No.
You get to go incredible most, then you get a lot.
Part kind of bad.
Exactly, right.
It's true.
What's wrong with this? I don't like it. At least it gives us this department's direction.
Well, I only like, there's like two things that really apply, so I like.
I told money.
Were you shocked? They assume she's showing you what she's selling.
But not that.
That, that.
I was gonna take pictures.
That would be good. Okay.
Jerry's not right.
Sunny, do you guys do something like this? Great, we had some broad strategic directions. This isn't it, yeah. Yeah, it's not this. This is pretty specific.
At work.
She must be a six.
Uh, I haven't.
Find more stickers.
Okay, I think we have all of the votes in. If you want to take your seats, we'll, we'll give you a real quick rundown on the totals.
I don't know, I mean. You have a lot of cousins, but.
If I write on these with a dry erase, will it wipe off later?
Thank you.
It looks like it, yeah.
I'm just wondering, I don't know.
I do, thank you.
Okay. Lots of them with three. We do have a significant middle and lots of them with nothing, so we've got a significant lower end. Number one, with all seven of you voting for it, implementing the vehicle replacement slash inventory policy. Number two is a three-way tie, the audit of county facilities and buildings, streamline permitting for development construction and all permits, and creating the correctional infrastructure committee to study how best to improve county corrections. Those all had six votes. We dropped down then to one with four. The dashboard was also over here, so that was a total of four votes on that one. And I did hear some comment that that really kind of incorporate, at least in a couple people's minds, that incorporates the broader subject of the.
I thought the dashboard and the website thing all come together.
Yeah. And then, you know, with three votes, there's a, there's a whole batch of them, I guess, when you get done with those top four. Is it four?
Five.
Four or five? Get done with the top five, come back with the threes and go, where do you want to go from here? So, good. Good. I, thank you all for some really outstanding discussion this morning. Very good.
When will you be sending us results on this, or, like a list, or?
Um.
I don't remember that.
Staff gonna compile the list?
We'll compile them and break them down in a, in an order of some sort. Yep, and give them to you in terms of what was. sorted out and what was not, and then we will come back with an action plan for at least the ones that obviously the majority of the board wants us to proceed with.
Well, and some of them we have going, you know, the, as far as the correctional thing, we have the CJCC that is really now just nicely getting started. A long time to get it, get it up and going, but, but I think they're just, they're truly making huge strides over the last few months.
All right. Are we done?
Unless there are any more questions for me, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Brings us to second public comment. Thank you for your patience. Step up to the podium, give your name, where you're from.
Tom Busamra, one three four eight two South Side Point Drive, Chair or President of our nonprofit before, during, and after incarceration. The request for fiduciary status on, from you, from the, from the commission, was submitted to you today. You know, as we were listening to discussion, we were hearing about, I'm hearing about, housing, jail, concerns about facility and culture. And that's what our proposal was about. Now, I, I didn't speak at the beginning because no one was saying that our proposal lacked merit. It was a noble cause, I heard comments like that. Basically, we were to provide transitory housing, transitional housing for inmates coming out of jail after being, having been screened with the help of the person you hired and three other volun, well, volunteers, Kathleen and Dan Barbosa, who have access and work in the jail, plus Tina McCauley Chaplin. So we had the mechanism in place. We had four beds, if you will, ready to go for women, four beds willing to, ready to go for men. And if a person who would have been otherwise homeless or was waiting for, had to spend some time before going to rehab, but didn't have a place to go and didn't want to go back to the people with which they were drinking or drugging, you know, we were hoping to serve those, maybe up to twenty people in, in a given year. So the mechanism was in place. We were, two goals, one to bring down recidivism, maybe not our primary goal. And our fir, my first goal was to be compassionate, to rehab people in a restorative way and get them back into our community. That was the proposal before you, and, but you took a different tact, and I just want, my invitation is for you to reflect on what you just did today. It seems momentous, more momentous than maybe you're willing to realize. When you go to your website for the commission, there's a pull-down tab for two percent. I'm looking at a list for this past year. Grand Traverse Board of Commission was fiduciary for Conservative Resource Alliance River Care Program, funding for Father Fred, funding for Goodwill Industries, funding for Department of Veterans Affairs, fiduciary for all these things, for Parks and Recreation, Project Cherry Tree efforts, on and on. I counted quickly, twelve. Basically, you've, it seems to me you're taking a philosophical stance about not participating in two percent. Easy to do to change your website, but at the same time, may I have permission?
Give you one minute.
Okay. At the same time, we do feel like we've been punched in the gut here. We spent a lot of time putting this proposal together as, and with the understanding that this could go somewhere, that who is more logical to be fiduciary for a program to help Grand Traverse County Sheriff Department-supervised inmates than Grand Traverse County? So I just am begging you to reconsider, reflect on this decision. It's profoundly philosophical. I, I hope you see that, and maybe you can revisit it. We have a deadline of May thirtieth to try to get this funding going, and really, my understanding is that other agencies will, are hesitant to take this on. I understand comments Mr. We like made, but I do hope that you will reconsider. We put a lot of effort into it. We were led to believe that this could happen, and now we're, we're, you know, falling on the sword of some philosophical point of view here, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment? Please, give us your name and where you're from.
Thank you for listening, and my name is Mary Beth Novak. I live at four four one six West Timberwood Drive in Traverse City. I am the treasurer for B D A I, and I have lived here in Traverse City for twenty-eight years. I have a good history of writing grants for nonprofits. I've written federal grants, I've written state grants, and I had never taken on a two percent funds grant until just recently, when we went to write this one. First of all, as a grant writer, and I don't, you know, if nobody's had that experience, you don't really have, I don't think, of a full appreciation as to how complex that whole process can be. I sure would have appreciated notice that, gee, we're gonna cut ties with the two percent funds and the band. I, I can't believe when the band gets notice that you will not support any grants that have been submitted through you out to them. What that will do for relationships between the tribe and the wealthy people in Grand Traverse County. Yeah, I, I don't understand quite what the issue is. I talked to Sunny for a couple of minutes when we had a break. But the reality to me is, the funding that Grand Traverse Tribe has, has made available to various nonprofits within our county has done an amazing amount of good work. And I don't know what the political re, issue really boils down to, but I think you need to think of who all really lives here. And there are a lot of people in dire straits. There are a lot of people who are indigent, homeless, so on. I'll tell ya, I've worked with the jail population over those twenty-eight years. And if, if I was given the same lot they were and was to leave jail with no place to go, no job lined up, nobody really paying much attention to whether I'm working a recovery program or getting the help I need with a mental health issue. I understand completely why some of these people go right back to the behavior that put them in jail in the first place. And I really do, I believe that this is something you folks really need to take to heart and think about. Because I don't think there's anything good that's gonna come out of this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? We'll move on in the agenda. Commissioners and department reports, anyone have anything to report?
I'm gonna take the opportunity to speak now on reports, so I'm gonna just discuss an issue here. What's gonna happen now? The tribe is gonna give that money away, no ifs, ands, or buts. And they'll give it to, different grants have been submitted through townships and the city and other agencies to build things that we probably would think have a lower priority than what these folks are presenting. Built for trails, for parks, for other non-essentials. And I'm disappointed, I could see where we could have gone through the lists that were submitted and say, yes to this, no to Civil, Civil Air Patrol, but to just carte blanche totally reject them, I think was really a misstep. We're doing it for philosophical reasons, thinking, we're sending a message to somebody that they could care less. They will distribute their money, and the other agencies will be glad to take it, and we just have missed an opportunity to at least channel to, to those resources. If someone had come in and submitted under the county, something that we felt was superfluous, was not critical, we could have struck that from the list and say, we're gonna support this, this, and this. But I think, I would like to think that maybe three other commissioners might join with me to have that put back on the agenda next month and go through the list, and if you want to, I guess, still send a message, if that's your whole intent, then you're welcome to do it.
Gordy, the deadline is the end of this month. This is our last meeting of the month, so you would find two other commissioners who want to hold a special meeting to, to attempt to address that, or we could vote now if you wanted to take it up at this time, but I don't know that that vote would change.
Okay, if I have the opportunity now, I'd, I'd like to, well, it'd have to be somebody to bring that vote back up, if somebody who voted.
Prevailing side.
Prevailing side. I was on the, I was on the prevailing side.
Is that true for a special meeting as well?
No.
To reconsider a matter, yeah, it has to be somebody.
We updated that. That was one of my changes at our first meeting, that it's easier to bring things back up now.
That's correct, yeah, I can't.
Three commissioners can sign for a special meeting.
Yep.
Following Gordy's lead, and I thousand percent agree with him, I think this was whatever philosophical statement meant to be made, with all due respect, I just, I felt it was highly inappropriate, and it has real impact on some of the most vulnerable populations in our community. This wasn't even just the, the before, during, and after incarceration nonprofit and the funding that they were looking to apply for, but also Michigan Indian Legal Services at ten thousand dollars, the Children's Bay Advocacy Center, which works with families with children who are dealing with sexual abuse, investigation and treatment for thirty thousand dollars, the Father Fred Foundation, again, dealing with folks who are dealing with a lot of challenges and need support, and this is addressing our local community, addressing needs that are real and pressing, and, yeah, I'm, I'm disappointed. And I wish there had been more discussion. I, I was taken frankly completely by surprise, or I would have said all of this in, you know, before we, we took the vote. But this feels very short-sighted, and we are putting these entities in a position to just completely miss out on this funding because the deadline is the end of May. They did what they were asked to do by the county. They got their application in by May first, and here we are, May fifteenth, and we have no more meetings unless we do a special meeting. This is also a long, this has been, I believe, a pretty uncontroversial thing that the county has done year after year after year, acting as facilitator for who knows how many hundreds of thousands of dollars that have impacted real benefit to our whole community. So I would ask that my colleagues reconsider, and I'm completely in support of the idea, and would certainly sign off on a special meeting so that we can do right by these nonprofits that are doing such great work.
And I'm gonna be the third.
Ditto?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, and I guess to, to the issue that arose that, that caused the vote to go the way it did, I, at, at this point, don't fully understand it, so I guess as part of the study session, if we want, if, if there's something that we, we even as a county can do, because we're not party to the agreement, it's the, it's the band with Governor Angler, I mean, with the state of Michigan. So I don't, I just don't know what that is, and I, I'd be happy to, to have more information brought to me so that we can talk about that, but I, I just, I desperately want that to be separate from this money is here in play, and it's available for good causes that, you know, we're, yeah. We, we need, so, I can't even finish my sentence. Yeah, so, so I would support a study session.
Any other commissioner reports?
Uh, no.
Any?
Just one quick thing, and then I'm just gonna put it out there. I put you on notice a month and a half ago that I had bid the railing project for the amphitheater at the civic center. I have been awarded that contract by a contractor. It is no contract with Grand Traverse County, it is not Grand Traverse County money. I, I'm not gonna discuss which contractor, I'm not gonna discuss the price tag, but I will put you on notice today. I'm gonna do the work.
Congratulations.
I'll just make a quick notice. I spoke with Traverse Health Clinic last night at an event, and remember a couple of months I had mentioned they have, they're at half capacity, while now for the pharmaceutical-assisted addiction treatment, they are over capacity and have a waiting list. They still have availability, availability of addiction treatment services, but not pharmaceutical, so there's a waiting list for those types of treatments, so. There's definitely, that list filled up pretty quick.
I, I just want to bring to the board's attention, last night I, I attended the, the Five Lake Township Planning Commission. The Pugsley redevelopment was on the agenda, it was reviewed by the planning commission. They did give initial, I won't say approval, but initial look at the site plan and the gun range, and that, that's moving.